Sound check, Joe. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Council will call them into order for the record. It is December fourteenth, twenty twenty one at four thirty P. M. We will begin this afternoon's city council work session with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burn.
Here.
Mayor Emerson.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burn.
A move that we adopt, no kidding. We have some issues, some changes with the agenda this evening. I spoke too soon. Item number eight from the consent needs to be polled. Do I need to statewide? Okay. Says Bill Neri has, oh, item number twelve. Is to be tentatively scheduled for pulled from the agenda and rescheduled for January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And if we need to talk about the details, Bill, Bill will be available if we need to talk more about that. But other than that, with those changes, I moved that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Second, the motion.
I have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, sign that by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and the changes to the agenda are adopted. Next time up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, other than item eight that was struck from the earlier, my move that we adopt the consent agenda for the mayor to sign it for the court to attest.
Second, the motion.
I have a motion in a second to adopt the consent agenda with item eight removed as earlier done. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, sign that by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and the amended agenda is adopted or is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will move on to item eleven, which is the mayor's office, Mayak Quarterly Activity Update. Ask Sahan to come forward for the introduction.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, good afternoon. It is my honor and privilege to introduce two members of the Mayak Executive Council. We're here to provide a highlight reel of some of the activities that Mayak has been up to over these past few months. We have with us tonight Jacob Mattson, a junior from Renaissance High School, who currently serves as the Chair of Community Service for Mayak. We also have with us James Lucky, a sophomore at Kuna High School, who serves as our communications coordinator. Come on up.
And gentlemen, if you just want to recognize yourself so that I know who's speaking.
I'm James. Thank you for having us.
And I'm Jacob. Good evening. Um, so just to begin, we recently had the city council candidate forum back in, I believe it was the middle of October, and during that, the public got to come in and ask questions to all of the city council candidates. And as far as I'm aware, considering that I could only participate in part of the event, it went pretty well. Um, and then next up, we had our annual trunk or treat, which we also participated in on October twenty-first. And what we did is fishing for votes. Kids would come up and they would toss a line over, get from that. And at the same time, we would hand out flyers to adults regarding registering to vote and voting and such. Also, we participated in rake up Meridian. We went to three different houses and managed to rake up approximately fifty or so bags of leaves from each of those houses and got a pretty good attendance from that regarding just the amount of people who showed up for the service projects.
So our next event was a Holiday Helpers event, and this was actually a pretty big event for Mayak. It was over three days. The first day, we went to the Meridian Library and we made decorations. And then the second day, we went to the actual building and set up those decorations and prepared for the premiere night. And then on the premiere night, we packed hygiene boxes for the event. And then our next event was on October twenty-sixth. We volunteered at the Idaho Botanical Garden, and we ran various stations throughout the garden, greeting guests and assisting them along the path throughout the lights.
Just a really quick change. That meant to say November twenty-sixth, but yeah.
That's why I'm bad, sorry.
Totally fine. Okay, and then we also last Sunday did the Interfaith food or Interfaith drive-through food drive, where we helped take in donations from the community and sorted them. And Mayak members all participated in getting all of that food ready for the food bank. Okay, um, so recently on Monday, we had our holiday party, December thirteenth, and we organized activities with the rest of the general Mayak council, such as a white elephant and general trivia, et cetera, just some fun things to get everybody in Mayak to know each other, to get to know each other better, and to get more interaction between the executive council and the general council for the Meridian Youth Advisory Council.
And then one other thing that's not in the presentation, but we've actually had four general council meetings since the last time we presented to the council on December sixth, November eighth, October twenty-fifth, October eleventh. And we had guest speakers about project management, stopping out drama. We heard from the mayor about local government, which is really cool. And we had another speaker talking about time management. And we're going to have sort of a break for the holidays, but our next general council meeting will be on January thirty-first. And then here are some goals Mayak has moving forward. First is increasing membership, especially before COVID. We had a really strong membership, and since COVID, it's sort of dwindled. We're now we're seeing about thirty around members every meeting. So that's one of our main goals is to increase involvement. And then our second goal is to improve meeting organization. So one thing we've noticed is with general council meetings, we're a little under time, and executive council meetings, we're actually going a little overtime. And so that's something we want to improve efficiency moving forward is possibly switching the times of those meetings or switching how that is. And then our third goal is to improve coordination with general council. So we want to receive more input from the general council about events that they're interested or ideas for things like that, instead of just executive council essentially planning those things independently.
Okay, and some of our upcoming events. So sometime in January, probably at the January thirty-first general council meeting, we're going to do a bring a friend contest, and this will probably continue on for the next or, I mean, the following month or so. And people who bring friends and such will possibly receive prizes or some other recognition in some other way to get the Mayak numbers back up. We're also planning on doing a mock city planning session, I believe with ICCU as well in January. If not a little later, regarding that. I'm actually not sure on all the details on that, to be a hundred percent honest. I am not working on that directly. Do you know anything on that?
So it's our government affairs that's planning that, but we're going to have an event where we like essentially have a mock sort of city planning thing to learn more about like that process. And so we're reaching out to some people about that. That's still being.
Okay, also in either February or March, hopefully working with CAPED Credit Union, we're going to be doing something called Mad City Money, which is a financial sort of simulation to prepare Mayak General Council and the Executive Council for the future of financing. I mean, everybody is going to eventually go out into the real world and have to experience that. So it's best to get the youth started as early as we can. And then sometime in either April or May, we're planning on working with a nonprofit in the Treasure Valley to set up a five K fundraising for both Mayak and for the nonprofit that we work through.
All right, thanks. Any questions?
Thank you. Council, just, and I don't know if these are for you or for Sahan, but a couple of things to note. This last general meeting, we talked about increasing my, I think the another thing they're trying to do is diversify membership. You know, it's been very Renaissance heavy, which there's nothing wrong with Renaissance, but this last, I know there's been a concerted effort to reach out to the other schools. In this last meeting, it was great to see some more Mountain View students there, and I think there's at least one other school that had represented there. So trying to do a little diversification. The other event, I didn't know, are we doing anything with the suicide awareness prevention event that's occurring out in Nampa?
Um, let's see, are you referring to Connection is the Kear and such, the January fifth event?
Okay, we're having an event where we're like helping out at like, it's like a concert event, bringing awareness to suicide. And we've been working with the senior advisory board to plan essentially suicide stuff we can do for that. So that's something.
You hit directly where I was hoping you were going to touch on that last point. So thank you, council. Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Nice, great presentation. And don't beat yourself up about the the lower numbers. Clearly, with the numbers you have, you guys are making a big impact in Meridian. Appreciate you coming and giving us these updates. I'm just curious, this is, I think, the first time you've been before us. Mind telling the council, why do you guys get involved with Mayak? What's what's the appeal? There's lots of ways to spend your time. Why are you spending some time in Mayak?
I personally am just interested in city government. I think it's really important that people are involved in their community. I think Mayak is a it's a really good organization for bringing, bringing like youth closer to the community and also bringing valuable life skills to the youth. So I feel with Mayak, I've learned a lot of skills I'm going to use, and it's also allowed me to make a difference. And it's really great to meet other youth that are passionate about things similar to me.
Or me personally, I feel like it's a really nice way to get in touch with the community. I mean, you're working directly with the local government on a lot of different things, both government-related and community service-related. And I really like that I can actually go and with the rest of the general council, executive council, and with everybody together, make an impact on just everyday people within the community.
Awesome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burn.
Great job, guys. Great job. So this morning I had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Ms. Danielson's government class at Mountain View High School, and made sure Saad gave gave some some brochures and some lit that spoke about Mayak and and during that hour of class, we definitely touched on on Mayak and and it's really cool to see you guys and what you guys are doing and the interest that people have amongst your body and the engagement that people have at, you know, at your age, the youngsters, because you guys are our future and very grateful and for what you guys do and for your interest in in community, because it's a really big deal for a lot of different reasons. So. But I wanted, I wanted to give a shout out to the class, Ms. Ms. Danielson's class at Mountain View. It was great. My.
You're watching right now.
I doubt, maybe they are, but my my stepson Cole is in that class and and I wanted to give a shout out to Miles, too. Miles up, he was sort of tired because it was earlier in the morning. And I told him, I told him it was my goal, you know, because we talked about goals as well. It was my goal to keep him awake the entire class period. And every time he put his head down, it was like Miles question. And so it was, I want to give a shout out to Miles. He's a good guy.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
A question, guys, is the school still require hours of community service, or has that kind of gone away with COVID for a while? Is that no longer required?
I think that's sort of gone away. I know, like, I'm in Honor Society, and that requires community service, but as for like a graduation requirement, I know my school doesn't have that.
No, uh, yeah, almost the same with Renaissance. We have a national Honor Society program, and that does require community service hours, but the actual school itself, the program, it depends on the program that you go through, because Renaissance does work a little bit differently than most of the other schools in the Treasure Valley.
That's welcome.
So when you do community service work through through Mayak, are they able to use those hours? Are you able to use those hours to count towards Honor Society work? So.
Yep.
Process to certify or whatever requirement is. That's great.
A lot of my hours are on a society, whatever.
And that's, you know, thinking of marketing, you know, Mayak, that's a good selling point to help, hey, you can get your community service hours if you're on Honor Society, that sort of thing. But sounds like you guys are on the right track, got some energy and enthusiasm and good planning in place. So wish you the best of luck on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here. So item twelve was pulled off the agenda, and so we will move on to item thirteen, which is our legal department discussion of draft orders concerning city council districts. Mr. Neri.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Members of the council. So this one, if you've had a chance to review the packet, we worked on it, and you may recall, we had a conversation with you a year ago about changes we were going to suggest to the legislature to change the state statute on this subject. As we all have learned since then, that really happened. So it basically, the way the current statute reads is once your city, if that's certified at a hundred thousand people, you do have to have districts. And it allows each city to determine how they want to do that. There's no set method by the code. There's no mandatory requirement other than it has to be driven by the census census. And so we came up with this, which was essentially the product of both Ms. Kane from my office and myself a year ago, then Kurt Starman came on board with us in July, and Kurt picked up the mantle with it as well. We have talked through a bunch of this, and so today was really simply an introduction of the topic, opportunity to weigh in if you wished. Obviously, this could be one of more than, more than a few discussions with you about this before we bring it forward for a passage of approval. Obviously, we want your feedback on your thoughts on it. Our goal and objective, we have, you know, we have a tremendous amount of time because we have to have this done for the twenty-three elections. So we have a time to do this. But, you know, all things being equal, we'd like to get it done within a reasonable period of time. It gives people a lot of advanced notice what the districts are, where their districts are, lets the current council members, the incumbents know where their districts are and how, whether or not they fit in them, or if there's two people in the same district. So they'll have plenty of advanced notice. So our objective is to try to do that. But there is a timing issue. And part of it is, it's driven partly by the state districting, and you folks are probably all aware of that. That's at the Supreme Court currently. I think they're hearing in the first week of January. So once that gets finalized, then the next step, it goes down to the counties, and the counties also then have to certify that as well. And then it goes to the county clerks, and they have to create the precincts. So once all those things happen, which should be done by spring, our thought process was to then begin our public process of doing this. So if you had a chance to review the ordinance, our suggestion in here was to have a committee made up of citizens, because the districts aren't formed yet. We can't pick them out of the districts yet. So we did have some that were basically geographically located and some that were going to be at large at the recommendations would come from the mayor on who the committee would be. Our thought process of that was, again, the mayor's voted on by the entire city. So the mayor doesn't really have a dog in the fight on where the districts are necessarily. And so that was kind of our thought process. But again, all thoughts are are welcome. I mean, again, we are trying to create some order out of a state statute that doesn't give us any guidance on what order they would like it to be. So they really left it up to cities. You may recall last year, Boise was required to district. By the time that was all decided, it was very late in the game, because the districts have to be done by July before the election. So they just went and did it. I mean, I don't think they had a whole lot of input. I think they just went ahead and did made because they didn't have time. So I don't know if they're going to do it different for the next election cycle. I don't know. I haven't spoken with them. I know Nampa is also evaluating that as well. I don't know what their, what their thought process is yet. They've reached out to us for our ordinance and asked to see what we're doing. But I haven't had any conversation with them at this point on what method they may choose. Any other questions? Obviously, there's only four of you here today, but like I said, we don't welcome all of your input. Email's fine if you want to send me an email, or you want to set up a time to meet and discuss it with with my office and with you. That's perfectly fine, whatever you'd like to do.
Thanks, Bill. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland.
One of the questions I had, Bill, I understand the reasoning under item C five, and that's someone who serves on the district being committee, shall be ineligible to run for Meridian City Council seat for five years following said service. I was trying to think through, is that after they're, they've completed that term, that clock starts ticking, or basically it's to prevent, you know, self-interest from kicking in and either running in twenty-three or twenty-five under and having set the boundaries and using that information, whatever. But so the clock would start ticking following the end of their service, and once it's been transmitted and accepted and and then the five-year term kicks in, or should we say, you know, through ineligible through twenty twenty-five as a more certainty? I don't know.
Or the next two elections.
Next two elections.
Yeah, we certainly can can amend it to that. Yes, you're exactly right. That was the thought process was that prevents anybody from sort of creating a system that they're a part of, and then suddenly they want to then run for office, too, because now they've helped set those boundaries. But if we want to make it more generic to say the next two city elections, that's certainly fine. Go with that. That's fine.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
To your point, you know, there might be change, further changes by the state legislature. So I think, you know, protecting that, whatever those changes are, but still making sure that what what the intent is, is is kept is is probably a good thing. Makes sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
A couple of observations, six versus seven, even number versus odd number. Whether there's a reason to keep it even, perhaps odd might be better. If seven's better, maybe there's a reason behind the six. Was an initial observation. And the other one, which I appreciate, is in gee, the tail end of this ordinance, it talks about the council's approval of it is based upon its compliance with code, and it reads as though it's a directive, the council shall, upon it being code compliant, which is kind of nice. It doesn't, it doesn't really even empower the council to object or want to change the work of the committee. I presume that's the intent of of this, keeping the electeds out of the mix and just making sure that it truly does meet state code. You can comment on that if that's the intent of that. I thought that was a nice feature.
No, you're exactly right, Mr. Borton. So, yeah, the intent was on that piece was simply to make sure that ultimately, again, someone has to ultimately approve approve it, and we wanted to make sure it was transparent and visible to the public, and the council is at least going to hold the committee accountable to follow the ordinance properly, to follow the state statute properly. On the sixth, we had a great deal of discussion about that. And again, I understand it's it's generally been my experience on these kinds of things that you don't generally get a order to type of split. And people try to get consensus, because that's really the objective when we've had these types of committees. Compensation committees is the only example I can use, but the compensation committee, they've never brought anything forward that wasn't the unanimous consent of the group. They always wanted to have consensus as a group. But certainly, we're not married to it. If you think seven's an odd number's better, that's perfectly fine.
No, just the, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
That explanation is helpful. I figured there was some, certainly some thought behind it. The other question is, maybe for a future date, is there consideration of pros and cons of having the the residency requirement for membership on the committee? Does the process benefit from having somebody who's resided in that area for a particular period of time? And is there a reason to have maybe a longer, even if it's a few years, somebody who's been in that region for a period to be part of it, or is that irrelevant to the work that they're doing?
Mr. Borton, I mean, that's a, that's a great point. I mean, there are, you know, on some of our other commissions, there are sometimes specific requirements that they have to meet, whether it's professional expertise or something like that, but there's also residency requirements for some as well. So it's certainly not unheard of that we've done that on certain commissions. So it's certainly an idea. I don't have any issue with that. I think whether it's one year, two years, I don't know that you probably want much more than that. Again, I guess the question gets real granular, right? Do you want it to be two years within that that district? This one, where we don't really have it, it's two years within north or south, east or west.
Right.
Fine. I mean, we're open to all ideas.
And Councilman Borton, just to back to your first questions, I think that the model that was used was the state redistricting model. You know, absent a lot of clarity or direction, we figured that that was safe to do things as they have tended to do them. So I know that was part of the conversation. Doesn't mean you have to, but that was kind of the model.
Okay. Sounds great. I'm glad you got it out early for people to chew on. It's very helpful.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Burn.
Thanks, Bill. Question. Walk me through the pros and cons in regard to using a a committee-based approach to to drawing these lines, these districts, versus hiring a consultant to come in and do it.
Uh, great question, Councilman Burn. And and we had a lot of discussion about that as well. I mean, you know, and not to make it sound like it's elementary, because it's not. But I mean, at the end of the day, it's really a math problem. I mean, you have a certain number of people. You have to divide the city up by that population base. So that's certainly something that our JAS people could do that, and we can do that based on the precincts. And I don't think it's going to be that complicated to do. So it really is going to be the citizen input, and I think our belief was it provides a greater level of transparency to the public, because it doesn't look like we just made it up the way we wanted it. We simply followed the citizen process, got citizen input. But certainly, I mean, I don't know the expense of a of an expert is really that necessary, because I think you're going to pay a lot of money for something that probably could be done pretty easily by our key department on the on that side of it. It really is just the where do you want these lines to go? At the moment, I don't know if we know specifically where the population bases specifically are. That's the next thing I think we need to determine from the state to determine, again, are we still heavier on the north side of the interstate with with population? My assumption is yes, but I don't know that. You know, you look at the the basic number that we have from the census, each of the districts is going to need to be somewhere in the area between nineteen thousand and twenty thousand people. And so if you divide that by six, you know, that's easy. You can do that. So in trying to figure all of that out, I don't know that it's worth the money to hire an expert. It's certainly your decision if you wish, though we can certainly do it that way. We felt the citizen method, and we've looked at other models. Kurt's done a lot of research on this and other models on how these are done in different places, obviously not in Idaho. And there's certainly no magic formula. There's there's ones where it's a committee. And there's certainly no magic formula. Uh, there's, there's ones where it's a committee. There's sometimes it's, 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 sometimes it is the elected official. Sometimes it is an expert. It varies by, uh, by community or what the community feels is means the most to them. So we're certainly not married to this. We, we thought this seemed fair and transparent. We certainly don't have any objection to some other method if, if that's the desire of the council.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Burt.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I, I think that also, you know, the, the ultimate, the ultimate important, uh, you know, point of importance of this is I, I believe is to keep it as transparent as possible. And to keep it in front of the public and keep the electeds a miles, you know, million miles away from us, you know, we don't want no even the image or even the thought of impropriety or, you know, gerrymandering or whatever you want to talk about. So I, I think that what you've been talking about is, uh, good. And I appreciate Kurt. I know Kurt spent a lot of time on this though. Thank you, Kurt.
We'll, we'll give it, oh, sorry.
Councilman Kavner.
Bill, could, oh, I thought it's on. Sorry. It is. I just need to talk into it. Thanks, Dean. Operator error. Bill, maybe walk us through kind of the timeline then in terms of approving this versus we would want to have the maps kind of finalized and approved. Is it kind of like starting it? December 31st, 22 and working backwards. I appreciate the desire that we want to have this out as soon as possible, but we are constricted by any action of the legislature, a response from the state with, with our district maps and then precincts at the county level. Can you maybe walk us through the timeline of how this would all play out?
You know, uh, uh, I'm going to ask Kurt to come up on that particular stuff because he has done probably the most research on those timing. Because again, you're right, we are driven a little bit by, well, first is Supreme Court, and then next the county and then next the precincts. Tentatively, I think most of that's going to be done by April-ish or so. I don't know, Kurt, maybe.
It's got to be done in March.
Oh.
Cause they got, they have filing periods.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Kavner, uh, I think, uh, Bill's accurate in terms of the timeline. What we're thinking, we have plenty of time to get this in place. And so if the council wants to go quicker or slower, that's fine. I think the tentative thinking is that once the litigation is resolved at the statewide level and redistricting the county, as Bill mentioned earlier, the county then will establish a selection precincts. And that will be the, um, the point in time when the city can actually start to work in earnest on its districting process. So we anticipate usually in most non-redistricting years, that happens in January. But because this is a redistricting year and because there is litigation that the Idaho Supreme Court will consider, that likely will happen more in the spring timeframe. We're tentatively thinking March. And so once the precincts are established, then our thought process is we would have the ordinance in place. Um, select committee members, if that's the council's, um, desire. And then the, the committee would work through 2022. We don't think it's, you know, the, of an extensive process in the sense that as Bill mentioned, really it's a mathematical problem of how you distribute the population amongst three geographic boundaries, but, um, our tentative timeline would envision the committee completing its work by the end of 2020. And probably sooner, but no later than the end of 2022, pardon me. Um, and be at that point, those individuals that choose to, uh, run for office in 2023 would have plenty of time to plan accordingly. To know what district they're going to serve in, if they choose to run for election. So I think it gives everybody lots of advanced notice on what the lay of the land will be.
Councilman Kavner, if you move mine, my, my answer would be try to do this in March. Start, start, try to do the ordinance by March. Whatever that ordinance is, if we do appointments, have them appointed by June 1. Let them work through the summer and have this completed by the time that one year in advance of what would be the filing period for the next year. So really looking to wrap it up, my hope would be by August, end of August.
In starting kind of one year out and work backwards. I like it. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hugland.
Question though, Bill alluded to a math problem and the precincts are mathematically established. And, you know, with this court, with the challenge before the courts, does that have any bearing on the precincts and their numbers? I mean, the boundaries aim, the courts may say, go back and make some adjustments in whether it's congressional or legislative districts. But the numbers are the numbers, the precincts are still established. Our boundaries don't change for elections. Could we still have the precincts in January and, and move forward, no matter what the, the courts are doing on the legislative and congressional fronts?
Mayor and Councilmember Hugland, my understanding, excellent question. My understanding of the process is that the county, Ada County in our case, will not begin the precinct process until the redistricting process is complete. So I'm not sure if that is um, a legal requirement or a practical consideration. But my understanding is that the, the county won't begin the process of establishing new election precincts until the statewide redistricting issue has been resolved by the Idaho Supreme Court.
And if I could add, the, the current county clerk would prefer that we create our boundaries based on the precincts that they draw and adopt, the new ones, not the old ones. So that, that is the process that we expect to see 50 additional precincts in Ada County, uh, created. How many of those are already in? We don't know, but yes.
Yeah. And the only other direction from the county clerk that we've received is not to split the precinct either. So with those two kind of caveats in mind, you know, we do, do kind of need that process done. But as the mayor stated, I mean, they have to have it done in advance of the primary in May. So they have to establish this for the legislature. So I anticipate whatever the court decides will be decided pretty quickly in January. And then they will begin that process, you know, to move that along and get it done. So. Right. So we'll give you some time to review, give you some time to take a look at it, give us some feedback. I'll work with the mayor and the council president on scheduling another, uh, session to, to discuss kind of where we are.
Yeah. And hopefully we can shoot for mid to late January to come back for any additional. Gives you about a month to get anything to legal for any additional feedback.
Okay.
Um, and then we can schedule after that when we bring it forward for an actual consideration.
Great. Thank you.
Also, we've reached the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
A move that we adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn that I don't need a second for, and I forgot. All in favor, just by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Dan. Guys, have it. We are adjourned.
Council will call the meeting to order for the record. It is Tuesday, December 14th, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM. We will begin this evening's regular City Council meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton?
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilman Hoagland?
Here.
Councilman Burnt?
Here.
Mayor Simison?
Here. Next item will be the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. For this next item, I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Hoagland.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure for me to invite Pastor Tim Pucey to come up to provide our community information. And we're going to invite people to participate in this community invocation or take this as a time of personal reflection. But before Pastor Pucey begins, I just want to let folks know that after 14 years at Valley Shepherd, he's retiring. And I've had the pleasure of being a member of his congregation for those 14 years. And in fact, was on the Pastoral Search Committee that brought him to Meridian. So that seemed like a long time ago, and now we're going to have to do it again. But he certainly goes with our blessing. He's been a wonderful leader for our congregation and for the community. His involvement in the Faith Leaders Group and all the activities that they engage in in the needs of our community, it's been greatly appreciated. And Pastor, for your faithfulness, coming before this body on a regular basis to pray for us and to help with the leadership and our wisdom. And certainly, we need it. And we greatly appreciate that. And we wish you all the best going forward. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Honored by your words. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight for a meeting of the City Council, we thank you, Lord, for this wonderful community, way in which you have blessed this community. We thank you for the leaders who serve this community and the many servants of the community who take care of the needs of people. I pray, Lord, for your peace to rest upon this community. We pray first for peace in our own lives. And we pray, Father, for peace in this community. We pray, Lord, for peace around the world. There's such a need for it. We thank you for this wonderful time of the year when many of us celebrate the birth of the one who was called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. And so we turn to you, Lord, asking for such peace to be in our hearts and in our lives. And, Lord, I pray wisdom for our City Council tonight. I don't know all of what is on the agenda and all the issues behind it. But I pray for your wisdom and guidance. I understand that so many of the decisions they have to grapple with are not easy decisions. And I just pray that you would somehow just guide them through the issues that they're dealing with tonight. And, Lord, continue to bless this community. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of it these years. And we trust you, Lord, to continue to bring good things in and through the city of Meridian. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Tim.
Have a city Meridian pin in your collection yet? So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Hoagland. Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
That's me, Mr. Mayor. I'm ready to roll. So with no changes to the agenda, so I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second, the motion. I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favoring by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Quirk, do we have anyone sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
You did not? Okay, then we will go right into our action items this evening. First item up is a public hearing and reading of ordinance number 21-1958. Cameron Torrey. No.
Mr. Mayor, we're just trying to get the presentation loaded.
Okay. We will open this public hearing. Staff comments for Megan.
Still waiting on it. Sorry.
Mr. Borton, if you'd like to entertain us with pictures of your dog, feel free.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman.
Oh, there it is. Good-looking puppy.
Oh, there he is.
Sorry about that.
No, no problem. I think while they're loading, would you like me to go ahead and start? Okay. Thank you so much. My name is Megan Conrad. I'm an attorney at Eilimann Burke, Special Counsel for Meridian Development Corporation, 251 East Front Street, Boise, Idaho. I'm here today before you to discuss the urban renewal plan for the Linder District Urban Renewal Project. This project area is about 189 acres. There's 18 parcels included, six of which are still within the boundary of unincorporated Ada County. The plan elements specifically for an urban renewal plan are set forth in Idaho Code Section 50-2905. There are eight elements that are set forth in that statute, and all eight of those elements have been specifically addressed within the confines of the plan or the attachments. I'll just quickly run through those eight elements and identify where they are. There is a PowerPoint that does specifically identify the sections that we're talking about. So you will have a record of where those are. The first is a valuation requirement that the collective values of the existing revenue allocation areas combined with the proposed new district cannot exceed 10% of the total taxable value of the city. That analysis was done using the 2020 assessed values due to the timing of when the plan was created. That is currently 2.62%. The total of all of those combined, including the proposed North Gate and the First Amendment, which was considered at your December 7th meetings. So those were included in the analysis as well. So even using the 2021 assessed values, you're well below the 10% threshold with this project area. The second is the statement listing the kind number and location of all the proposed public improvements. That is specifically identified in Section 301, as well as Attachment 5. The third is the Economic Feasibility Study that is set forth in Attachment 5 to the plan. There's also a fiscal impact statement requirement that is set forth in Section 502.8 of the plan, as well as Attachment 5. There's the description of the methods of financing. That's in Section 501 in Attachment 5. The plan has to include a termination date, which is set forth in Section 800. The termination date in this particular plan is for the full 20 years. So a termination date would be December 31 of 2041, recognizing the agency would receive dollars within 2042. That does not preclude a revenue allocation area from terminating early. It just is, to the extent that there's development is delayed or the revenues are less than projected, more time may be needed to fulfill the projects that are identified in the plan. And then the final point is the description of the disposition or retention of any assets, which is also set forth in 800, typically at the time of termination of a revenue allocation area assets that are owned by the agency would be disposed of typically to the city unless there is a better public entity to take those. There is a requirement in both the law and the act that states if there is an agricultural operation, and that is defined in the code, and it's generally very broad, and it does have a three-year look back. It requires property owner consent to be included within the district. So that analysis was undertaken. Six parcels were identified as requiring an ag consent, and those parcels did obtain an ag consent. The project list in this particular plan was informed by a number of different types of documents that are city planning documents, as well as property owner discussions. The city's comprehensive plan was reviewed. You also have a 10-mile interchange specific area plan that greatly informed the types of projects that are included herein. City conversations with both city and Meridian Development Corporation staff, Ada County Highway District staff, and property owners within that 188 acres. This proposed plan is extremely limited and really only contemplates three fairly significant projects. The first is the Linder Overpass project that focuses on the southern approach to that overpass. As part of these projects, you know, there are some ancillary spinoff projects, such as, you know, the need to acquire some real property, or perhaps other right-of-way improvements when we get down to the local road project. But that project is anticipated or estimated to cost $1.5 million. The second project is the Sewer Main Project, and that's anticipated to be a $3.5 million project. And then a local road project that is an east-west connection that's off of Overland Road that runs approximately between South Winder and South Ten Mile Road. That's a $2 million project. So we're talking about a total of $7 million worth of improvements within the life of this district. This map shows an estimate as to the proposed sighting of those projects. As this project area builds out, the yellow line represents, obviously, the approach to the Linder Pass, overpass. And then the green line that is parallel to I-84 is the proposed location of the sewer line. And then the pinkish line is the proposed location of the east-west local road. These are representative, and, you know, once development occurs, these will be more appropriately cited. But just for purposes of representation, these are the estimated locations. So Attachment 5 is the Economic Feasibility Study to the plan. That includes the revenue model and assumptions that are used that drive whether or not this project is economically feasible. The estimated tax increment yield over the 20-year life of this plan is $11.3 million. The private investment in this area is estimated to be $110 million. And at the 20-year mark, it's estimated that this project area will have accrued $218 million worth of increment value if it goes the full 20 years. The assumptions are similar to what you have seen before in these discussions. One difference is that it is anticipated that those unincorporated parcels will incorporate into the city prior to development occurring. Land value is estimated to increase at 8% a year for five years, and then 4% for the remainder of the term. Improvement values are increased at 10%, with 5% for the balance of the term. The tax rate, the overall tax rate that generates revenue for this project area is reduced by 10% and held constant through the life of the district, which is pretty conservative at .0053. Again, the total capital cost and the improvements over the life of the district are $7 million. The Linder Overpass is in 5.4, Attachment 5.4 to the plan. It shows how those funds will be essentially allocated to a fund that accrues over time. So there is a revenue model that shows how all of these projects can be paid over the life of the district. Just a quick note, Councilmember Strater had requested some information concerning scenarios showing the city's budget capacity with and without the Linder District Revenue Allocation Area. That information was provided to Councilmember Strater, and it really does show that there is no harm to the tax base, and that, in fact, the budget capacity does increase over the life should this district be in place. Other considerations, since we are talking about a multi-jurisdictional project area, we did have to have a number of meetings with the Ada County Board of County Commissioners. They did review the eligibility study for this project area and determined that there was a basis to consider an urban renewal project for this area. Originally, the project area was slightly larger, as directed by this body at the time of the adoption of the eligibility study. We were directed to remove some of the parcels north of I-84. So the project area is smaller than the study area. Additionally, as a statutory requirement, the Ada County Board of County Commissioners has to adopt a transfer of powers ordinance, as well as an intergovernmental agreement that's entered into between the Board of County Commissioners and the City Council. The Board of County Commissioners has completed both of those tasks. And then finally, as this is a new project area and based on statutory changes, there is an agreement that was signed on Monday with Ada County Highway District, and will between Ada County Highway District and Meridian Development Corporation concerning the use of those revenue allocation dollars in this project area. So, final point. Here's the timeline of the consideration of this project area. It's gone through a number of public meetings, both before the City Council, Meridian Development Corporation, and the county as well. There's also been discussions with Ada County Highway District. The notice of this public hearing was published in the Idaho Press two times. And today is the time set for the public hearing and ordinance reading. So with that, happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
An odd question. I appreciate the timeline. It's helpful. We kind of look at these in week-to-week periods, and putting them all together is helpful. Are you aware of any of these public hearings? Has anyone come to testify about these, in particularly in opposition to what's being proposed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh. Just to be clear, not all of these were public hearings. They were public meetings. I am not aware of anybody that has come forward. There has been significant public outreach with the property owners within this proposed project area. I'm not aware of any opposition.
Thank you.
Council, any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you so much.
This is a public hearing. Mr. Quirk, do we have anyone that signed up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, no one's signed up. We've also received no comments.
Okay. Well, if there's anybody in the room that would like to come forward and provide testimony on this item, now is the time to do so. Or if there's anybody online that'd like to provide testimony, please use the raise-your-hand function, and we'll be happy to bring you in for any comments. Seeing no one in the audience that'd like to provide testimony, or nobody online wishing to provide testimony, council to have a motion to close the Seeing no one in the audience that'd like to provide testimony or nobody online wishing to provide testimony, counsel to have a motion to close the public hearing. Mayor. Councilmember.
Move that we uh, close the public hearing.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it and the public hearing is closed. Next item up would be the reading of the ordinance, number twenty one dash nineteen fifty eight. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance, the City Council of the City of Meridian, Idaho, approving the urban renewal plan for the Lender District Urban Renewal Project. Which plan includes revenue allocation, financing provisions. Authorizing the city clerk to transmit a copy of this ordinance and other required information to county and state officials and the affected taxing entities. Providing severability, approving the summary of the ordinance, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody that like it read in its entirety? If not, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Burt.
Uh, my move that we approve ordinance number two one dash one nine five eight.
Under suspension of the rules?
With uh, suspension of rules.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to approve ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen fifty eight under suspension of the rules. Is there a discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Mayor, I abstain.
Oh, any opposed? No opposed, so the vote is three ayes, known nays, and one abstention.
Thank you.
Mr. Gordon. Okay, and the item is agreed to. So with that, we will move on to item number two. Uh, thank you, Tori, Bruce, Megan. Um, and Phil, who's online this evening, for your work to get in all those moving forward and done timely. Uh, next item up is a public hearing for um, Paraplace subdivision H twenty twenty one dash zero zero five six. And H twenty twenty one dash zero zero nine one, we will open this public hearing with staff comments from Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As noted, this first uh, action item tonight is going to be Paraplace subdivision. The site consists of sixteen point six three acres of land zoned R U T rural urban transition and R four located across three different parcels, generally near the northeast corner of Blackhead and McMillan. To the north is existing R four and T two S single family. To the east is to the east and south are county residential five acre parcels. To the west is R eight zoning with single family residential um, development approved and under development. The future land use designation on the site is medium density residential, which allows residential uses uh, density, gross density specifically at three to eight dwellings per acre. Your request before you tonight include annexation and zoning of ten acres of land with a request for the R eight zoning district. A rezone of approximately seven acres of land from the R four zoning district to the R eight zoning district. And a preliminary plot consisting of sixty five single family detached building lots and eight common lots on sixteen point six acres of land. Subject project includes three existing parcels, one of which was annexed into the city with the R four zoning district in two thousand and seven. And has an existing development agreement. The area to the north of this project is developed with R four zoning and with detached single family homes. In addition, there's an R eight subdivision approved to the west of this project as noted and under the name of Brody Square subdivision. The applicant is proposing paraplace with sixty five building lots, which equates to a gross density of three point nine one units per acre. The proposed use of detached single family residential is an allowed use and anticipated use within the requested R eight zoning district and the future land use designation of medium density residential. The area of R four uh, that's existing, which would be this north parcel here, this weird shaped one. Created a county enclave, which is known as the Portman Out parcel, which is this little piece here. There is a property line directly in line with this property line. Created a county enclave that is still owned by the same property owner. The enclave is not annexed and was approved for a plat in two thousand and seven. The plat is long expired, but the DA still exists. The applicant is requesting to rezone this area to the R eight zoning district to match the requested zoning of the rest of the plat. Because there is an existing DA tied to a plat that's no longer valid and the applicant is requesting to rezone this area. The applicant did submit a development agreement modification to replace the existing DA, well, to terminate it and then replace it with an, an uh, new DA to incorporate this area into the boundary of the annexation under area concurrent with this plat. In general, staff finds that rezoning this area from R four to R eight is a logical expansion of the existing zoning near this corner of Blackhead and McMillan. Staff finds that proposal to annex the ten acres and then rezone to the R eight zoning district offers an appropriate transitional density to the developed R four area to the north. Specifically because of the changes that the applicant made to align the northern properties here with those existing to the north. There are two existing county residential single family homes with accessory structures on the two five acre parcels abutting Daphne Street. All structures are proposed to be removed upon development of this project. The Portman Out parcel also has their septic tank drain field on a small area just north of their property line near North Blackhead, which you can see with a dotted line here. Originally, there was a non-buildable lot in this area. But following staff's recommendation, they've removed this buildable lot in lieu of a easement and future legal document, which is going to outline its maintenance use and termination as noted in a existing DA or proposed DA provision. Overall, for the project, the proposed use is detached single family residential with an average lot size of approximately sixty seven hundred square feet. The minimum lot size of around fifty three hundred square feet. The proposed use, lot sizes and the revised lot alignment along the north boundary should provide for a development that is cohesive with the adjacent development to the north and the planned development to the west and southwest. All subdivisions are, are, all subdivision developments are required to comply with the subdivision design improvement standards and U D C eleven sixty dash three. Specifically, the length of the proposed east west cul-de-sac shown as West Philomena Court in the north portion of the site does not comply because it is greater than five hundred feet, which is approximately five hundred and fifty feet in length. Now, originally, the preliminary plat met this five hundred foot requirement and it included an access easement from the cul-de-sac to the west to the Portman Out parcel. Staff recommended that the applicant extend Philomena Court further west so that, so that way right of way touched the property line. Staff recommended this because easements are more difficult to track and maintain than having a budding right of way touching a property line. With the current layout, the city will have more means of requiring the Portman Out parcel to take access to Philomena Court instead of Blackhead should that property ever redevelop. Access for the site, I'll go back to the bigger picture. Access to the site is via multiple local street connections and does not have any arterial or collector street connections. One access is via extension of North Sapino Avenue, a local street stub to the north property boundary here from Vatenza Commons. The applicant is proposing two new north south local street connections to West Daphne. West Daphne abuts the property along the south boundary here. So these are the two other north south local streets. Daphne Street is the access point for the existing county residence and is proposed to be improved with half plus twelve feet of pavement, curb gutter and five foot attached sidewalk. Consistent with the local street, street section. The proposed North Sapino extension intersects Avila Drive, which is being constructed from the west from Brody Square and is the access point for the noted Philomena Court. The applicant is proposing a common drive off of North Sapino, which is this here. And has access to three building lots. Looks confusing, but the back three take access off of it. These two take access off of Sapino. All the local streets are proposed as thirty three foot wide street sections with five foot attached sidewalk within forty seven feet of right of way consistent with A C H D policies. The applicant is also proposing to extend Avila Drive to the east boundary as a stub street for future road connectivity to the east. Five foot detached sidewalk is also proposed along Blackhead as required along an arterial. As proposed, this project and the existing conditions of the Portman Out parcel not being annexed into the city would create a sidewalk gap and continue the sidewalk gap along the east side of Blackhead. This gap would be approximately a hundred and ninety feet in length and equates to the out parcels frontage along Blackhead. The sidewalk gap is why the project required A C H D commission approval instead of the standard staff level review. The A C H D commission approved the road layout and the overall project without this additional sidewalk, but instructed the applicant to try and obtain additional right of way and sidewalk along this out parcel frontage. Staff has recommended a condition approval along the same lines of this. Consistent with other approvals in the area as well, staff does recommend an interim sidewalk is constructed along the out parcel frontage for pedestrian safety and to eliminate the sidewalk gap until frontage improvements are required. Should the Portman Out parcel redevelop. So the way this usually works is take a portion of the shoulder and have a raised curb in order to have that sidewalk along that frontage. It should not impede too much on any existing landscaping or berming along Blackhead. But the applicant needs to work with the, the A C H D as well as the Portmans to get that done. The applicant is proposing approximately two point eight four acres of qualified open space, which equates to approximately seventeen percent of the gross area. They are also proposing three qualified amenities, a shade structure with a picnic table, a tot lot and at least twenty thousand square feet of extra open space, meaning above the minimum requirement. Staff finds the proposed open space and amenities to be thoughtfully designed and placed for appropriate recreation use. So then two main areas is this linear open space here. That has a nice pathway and three irrigation ponds because there's apparently groundwater issues here for irrigation. And then there's a large green space here with some existing basically tree farm that they're maintaining and they'll thin from my understanding so they get this pathway through and that was discussed at the commission hearing as well. At the commission hearing, they did recommend approval with a couple noted modifications. There's some public testimony. They discussed the location of the proposed micro path, transition and lot sizes between what's proposed here and there. So that was adjusted. Overall desire for the applications to be approved as proposed because of the applicant's willingness to work with the sellers. And there was discussion about the city's place in creating the Portman Out parcel, starting in two thousand and seven and onward by not requiring the parcel to be annexed originally. The commission discussed uh, the use proposed for the irrigation ponds. Configuration of the remaining parcels to the south and east specifically is the proposal and adequate transition to the larger county five acre, the larger five acre county parcels. They discussed the size and configuration of the lots on the common drive. And they discussed issues of allowing the existing Portman Out parcel to remain, not become part of the plat. And what are our options in requiring them to annex? As noted, the commission did recommend approval with two specific recommendations. They wanted to move the micro path and the large open space lot to be further away from the existing fence, which they did. It used to be a little bit closer here and kind of looped around by the fence. They moved it more centrally to the cul-de-sac, which was an easy fix. They also revised, they were required to revise the plat to show the lot lines along the north boundary to align with the existing lot lines of the Vatenza Commons subdivision, which they did. Therefore, there are no outstanding issues for city council other than I guess the noted waiver that they need to have the cul-de-sac longer than five hundred feet. There has been no written testimony since the commission hearing. And so now I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions? Thank you. Uh, would the applicant or the representative like to come forward? Take your name and address. The record will be recognized for fifteen minutes.
Tony Sang, uh, six five one eight North Fairborn Avenue, Meridian. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I appreciate the opportunity today to present a paraplace. My name is Tony. I represent Applied Media, developer of Paraplace. In attendance, we have Dan Lardy with Levitt and Associates. So if there's any technical questions, he's happy to jump up there and answer any questions. Want to start by thanking Joe um, and Bill, who've been greatly insurmountable to getting this done. And I think Bill was the, the gentleman that actually was part of this project back in two thousand and seven. So he has a lot of uh, background and has a lot of insight about the project. So they've been really, really, really helpful. So. I was a scroller. Okay. So a lot of this information here, the staff has covered. And the reason I put this map up is that when you go to the overhead map via Google Maps or Apple Maps, it looks really sparse because the maps aren't updated. So what I did is I kind of put together what's being planned, um, what's been built. The little green spot there is our, our paraplace. And, you know, we didn't choose to make it kind of a shape like a goat, but because of the land that was available to us, we had to fit this into what Brody Square is already done. What's avail- what the land was available, available to us to kind of create this subdivision. So just want to illustrate what's going on there. I know there's a question about density, a question about whether the R eight density is appropriate for this piece. And I wanted to kind of illustrate, if you look around this area, art, there's a lot of R eight density, some R fifteen. And since we're building to um, a much lower density, um, under four on a gross basis, a little bit above four, four point seven on a net basis. I feel like it's a pretty, pretty appropriate transition coming south from R four density. And as you move towards Brody, they're a little bit denser and Berkeley has a project down there that's R fifteen, uh, like a townhome community. So I think it's a good blend. Right, I stole the slide from staff. Um, it kind of illustrates, everything in red is um, the, the uh, Jamestown Ranch. I know that they're not approved, but I know that's a plat that they're, I think, seeking approval next month or actually this month for the planning and zoning. And so this is a good overview of what it, what that side of the town's going to look like. Um, it's kind of getting all developed out. And this is just a, so illustration what the future land use was going to be. It's medium density residential as uh, Joe has stated. And so um, our little subdivision kind of fits right into that medium density with the three to eight dwelling units per acre. So as you can see, this is a little bit different than the illustration they've shown. Our engineers have told us that the pond has to be a little bigger. So you'll see that adjustment. And um, the lot lines on the north as per um, planning zoning's recommendation is to line up the lot lines. So we went ahead and um, eliminated one of the lots. And if you've noticed the top left corner, that's kind of where the story really starts is um, you know, originally when we saw this piece of land, you know, we had four or five uh, lots planned to be cut in that corner. And so our original plat, this is probably our fifth version, um, included four or five lots there. So during our first neighborhood meeting, a lot of neighbors showed up and I noticed one of the biggest issues was this lot. The trees that have been there, the Portmans have been there for going on forty years. They started planting trees. There's, there's willows and blue spruces and there's a, it's a nice, it's a little park in the middle of the, uh, city. And the, the neighbors all talked about how much they enjoyed this park, this, this, this tree area. And one of the neighbors, Maria, even said, one of the reasons she bought her house was because of that, that piece. So we went back to the drawing board. We, we heard what they had to say and we knew how important it was. And we went out and um, decided to leave that area be. Put a little micro path in there, make an amenity. Um, I didn't realize how much people enjoy that piece. In fact, back in two thousand, back, the Portmans tried to donate this two acres to the city. And the city said the minimum donation size was five acres and that's how much they cared about the piece. They were willing to give it away. They wanted to maintain it. They've seen it grow for forty years. I mean, I think Paul planted most of those trees himself. So hearing all that and hearing public testimony and knowing that, you know, this qualifies as open space. It, it's not to, you know, our benefit to have some more open space. Um, we felt that, you know, it was a great recommendation by the neighbors. Um, we took that same count and we went ahead and um, made that just an amenity. This is just the kind of summary of the date, raw data of the land. Obviously, a little higher than needed um, on the open space, but I'm, I'm sure that's expected. So here's a picture of that lot, that area that I spoke of. You can see this Google Earth aerial picture. There, there's going to be some, I've already warned um, all the neighbors and the Portmans, there's going to be some trees that need to be thinned. There's, we're going to lose some trees that abut to Blackhead just because of um, we have to, the sidewalks that go there. But our goal is to preserve as many trees, um, prune it back, make sure it's a safe lit um, walkway for um, the communities, not only paraplace. But I know there's a letter from um, a gentleman, a family across the street that said, was very in favor of keeping these, this tree. I, I mean, it was such a big issue that I probably, whether I liked it or not, we're going to fight it. This is a picture of the path, path area. Um, I've been at this property many times and there's a natural path that we can obviously amend. We work with the neighbors and make sure that the path makes sense. I know Joel, who didn't make it today, is concerned about it being too close to his property. So we did move it to a more centralized place. And the lighting will be very, um, will take a lot of care in the lighting because the last thing we want to do is have lights shining into people's backyards. So a little history, I just want to kind of bring up a little history. I know this out parcel, this Portman residence is a discussion. This was their original two thousand and seven um, annexation into the city of Meridian in the R four basis. You can see that it was a kind of a interesting, it was called Bell Haven at the time, kind of interesting little piece. Didn't really make sense. They had a couple developers try to get this through, put some- Didn't really make sense. They had a couple developers try to get this through, put some some lots in there and it kind of never made sense. And then, so what happened was the LeMunions, Cheryl, Cheryl and Gary thought, hey, what if we did it together? And we, so we kind of worked with the two families, didn't make sense either. And upon. Advised from Bill, they've always said, a couple developers to try to make this subdivision work, but you need more land. And so therefore we got the pairs involved. And once the pairs agreed to be part of this kind of this project, we made, we were able to have enough land to make a subdivision make sense. So the 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 portion piece is really important. If you look at this, this is the view from. The north heading south on Sapino, it's the connector that would be connecting a lot of that southern piece to the northern plate piece where pleasant. Pleasant View Elementary School is, you know, obviously with Brody Square having about sixty five homes. The Daphne by Berkeley with twenty eight homes planned and there's going to be hundreds of homes back there, provides a nice, safe. You know, interior path for children to access their own elementary school. So ACHD, so we went through ACH, got the ACHD approval. I know the big issue and I want to step into it is this sidewalk gap. And we've worked with the poormans greatly and and their recommendation was. They proved the project as is, but they want to make sure that we're working with the poormans on a solution. And so in this, in this email that I, and it's that, in this email I've sent, let me show you the email real quick. And by the way, Paul and Gail have been great in this process, you know, we've worked closely with them and I respect their rights as as landowners of. You know, to stay in the county if they choose, but in the email what I've said is, listen, if they want to annex, I'd be happy as a developing partner. To pay for their curbs, pay for their asphalt, pay for any connection they want on the backend. Now, I'm not saying they should, but we're willing to and as as part of ACHD's requirement is I need to work with them. And so we offered to pay, we offered to help them out and look, if you've ever go to the poorman's property, they built this house themselves back in ninety four. It took them three years to build, it's solar, it's heated by thermal, it's it's self sustaining, they have net metering, they're actually pumping power back into the city. And so I respect their right to, as they're, as a property owner, but. One thing they have done is, and as you can see with ACHD, their, their, their plan is that in two thousand. Thirty six, they're expanding lanes. Now, we all know with the activity in Meridian, that that timeline is going to be moved forward quite a bit. But the current plan is twenty thirty six and, you know, the poormans figured, hey, you know, we have a bunch of years left to keep this access. Let's try to keep as long as we can and be self sustaining, so. Yeah, so we went, we've worked with the poormans, we actually went out there and walked in and they've agreed to make a temporary sidewalk. We walked the property with them. In fact, they will now agree to allow us to create a temporary sidewalk. They're allowing us to kind of eat into some of their vegetation. Part of that is I'm agreed with them is that we're going to give them a fence. And one of the big things is that that's their front yard. They know the city wants it, they're working with us. I think that they've been really fair and easy to work with. That being said, do I, if they're annexed in with this, would it solve most of our problems? Sure. But I don't think we have, I have a right or anyone has a right to force them to annex in. The seven acres is ready to be annexed in, so, you know, I think that's a fair ask that. I'm just very appreciative of the fact that they're willing to work with us on creating a temporary path. And that's, this is what the path looks like. So if you're looking from the north, this is what that area looks like. They're willing to give up some of their bushes and some of their, their property. In order to facilitate a safe pass path for us to all work with. So in short, you know, who worked, we, I think, we, I hope you appreciate the fact that we worked, you know, really hard to make this kind of unique piece, it's pretty challenging. It's not the prettiest piece, you know, if we had, you know, a big, two or three nice rectangles to work with, you know, we can get a little more creative, but. Based on what we had to work with, this is the best shot we had, so. I am happy you stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Councilman Cavan.
First off, Tony, right?
It's Tony, yeah.
Thanks for being here. This is kind of a quasi infill project and they often bring with them such unique challenges and I'll just say. I think it's very rare that we have an applicant that comes before us that has been so proactive in trying to address them from many different angles, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
My, my only real question for you is, this, the common space is really a unique passive park is really what it kind of is and I'm. I'm just curious, we always hate, you know, thinning trees, particularly some that are really mature in that area, I know you are too. I'm just curious, is it your plan to engage the city arborist in that process?
Absolutely, yes.
And then just Mr. Mayor, one more if I may.
That's my cover.
Just, just for clarification, I was under the impression that poormans were not in favor of connecting the sidewalk, but your comments towards the end led me to believe that maybe they.
They, yeah, they're not, they weren't in favor and I mean, we've been working, I mean, Paul and Gail, I've gotten to know pretty well. Yeah, I call them, I text them, they're probably sick of me because I'm trying to find solutions. And I really think as a developer, it's, it's trying to find a solution between the city and the community and. I take the recommendations as, this is what you want, why fight it, you know, and that's, even though the funny thing is, if you look at the P and Z meeting, Joel came up and said, I like those. You know, northern lots lined up. And then afterwards I go, Joel, why do you want them lined up? Be staring at each other's backyard, he goes, yeah, you're right, I probably don't want them now, I'm like, it's too late. They've, they've ordered us to land them, based on your recommendation, I'll lose a lot, kind of hurts, but I know it is what it is. And he's like, oh, man, you know, he thought about it somewhat, some more afterwards, but what can I do, right? You can't unring a bell, so. You know, a lot, a lot of, for me, is trying to make it happen for the poormans. I mean, they've been working at this since two thousand and seven. You know, it's a long time, you know, and they're, they're great people, so, you know. Great. I have another question at this time, thank you.
Ms. Mayor, I'm saying, the, the property that's to the south of the poorman's property, that's, that's planned for development, if I recall. But do you know the timeframe for that development to occur?
Yeah, so that's, I think his name is Randy Karno with Pinnacle, it's called Brody Square. So they're approved, they've, they've broken ground, so they're in development right now on the hor, on the horizontal side. I think I, last I talked to him, they'll be calling vertical probably in the next four to six months. So it's the timing, I mean, they're, they're ahead of the game. I think they got approved a bit ago, maybe six or eight months ago. I haven't checked the records.
Yeah, just to follow up, I was, I was concerned even with a temporary sidewalk, if it's going to be a sidewalk to nowhere. You know, to, to adjust the timing on that, but it sounds like things will work out from a timing standpoint.
Yeah, they're, they're definitely ahead of us on the time scale. Thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Just wanted to clarify for that point further. I've driven out there for other inspections and I think that their landscape buffer and fencing, especially on their north piece. It's already done, which means the sidewalk is there.
Sorry, I didn't notice.
Mister Mayor, that's one, Bert.
Can you explain what a temporary sidewalk will look like? Is it asphalt or is it going to be, what is it going to be?
I would, we've talked about that. And we're committed to put in whatever, I mean, the poormans can speak, we're, we're putting, we're prepared to put in what's safe. I think the curb is really important. That, that piece is important. I've always pictured the asphalt. We're open, we're, we're willing to work with the city and ACHD, I've worked with ACHD on different projects and, and they're, they're actually generally easily work with. We, we're open to whatever makes the most sense for ACHD and the city. I think it's a combination of both. No, no firm plan, sorry.
Mister Mayor. That's one, Bert.
Joe, what would be the recommendation of the city?
Thank you, Mister Burnt. I would say. Because it's going to be interim, black cat will get widened, staff anticipates that ACHD will say it's going to be asphalt. Just the raised curb is probably one of the most important pieces, like Tony said. And then have that outside of the, the edge of the shoulder there, but asphalt should be fine.
So raised curb with asphalt.
Yes, sir.
You okay with that?
Absolutely.
There's just two cents that to take back in case you're still openness is. It seems like it'd be smarter if they want, if they like their own escaping to do it now, to allow it to grow back before that road becomes a five lane road. Unless they're committed to just having a fence be their only real solution. Take that for whatever that is. I don't know if they're listening, they're watching.
They're here.
They're here, but. To me, that's what I would do. I would start getting my land, get it put in the right place long term so that your landscaping can grow back before you do have five lanes, but. That's my two cents. For, for whatever that's worth. I didn't have any question, it was more of a statement. Counsel, any additional questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quirk, do we have anyone to send up to provide testimony tonight?
Mister Mayor, we do have a few. First is Paul Poorman. Hope I pronounced that right.
You say your name and address for the record, please, be recognized for three minutes.
So my name is Paul Poorman, address is fifty two thirty North Black Cat Road. And Mister Mayor and members of the city council, I'd like to present my comments about the paraplace subdivision. And let me just say that I'm hoping that you will approve that, approve the subdivision tonight and. I'll tell you why, I'm going to skip way through my little talk here because Tony pretty much said. And summarize what I was going to say, he has really tried to and succeeded in bringing a lot of very different. Constraints and issues together and come up with a solution to pretty much all of them. And he didn't have to do that, but he's been an extremely flexible developer and the, the plan that he has. Really, really looks like it's satisfied many of those concerns. And. I think we talked about the temporary pathway and Tony and I are, and Gail, my wife, are working on some ideas for that. We think we can come to some kind of an agreement for something that works for us as well as for Tony and for the city. We're hoping that that will, will happen. And so I guess I'd just like to say that I hope you'll approve the plan. Tony's a first class guy and. He's working to build a community of desirable homes for generations to come. And I think Meridian needs to encourage more developers like Tony to build our future here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Okay.
Mister Mayor, next is Gail Poorman.
Say your name next. Mister Mayor. Members of the city council, my name is Gail Poorman, fifty two thirty North Black Cat Road, Meridian. If you would tolerate me, I want to tell you a little story about our place because it is very special and I think it has become special to our new neighbors as well. About forty years ago, when we bought our property, the whole area, I don't know if any of you remember, as old as I am, but it was all open. It was completely open space, it was farmland. And on our acreage, it was just field grass, just there. So we decided to plant some trees, five hundred of them to start with. And I questioned my husband's logic, in the middle of the desert, I said, and it became known as poorman's folly. Well, over the years, as we watered, nurtured and planted hundreds more trees. A lot of them, we were able to sell to the neighbors because they wanted landscaping trees and so we, we did those. There's a, as Tony mentioned, there's a wide variety of trees there, there's Scotch pine, ponderosa pine, Norway spruce, ash, willows. And birch. So as our trees became bigger and we got more out of the landscaping business, what we have today is a, is a beautiful forest. And it is home to a lot of birds. We have migratory birds, our neighbors told us that they have, they've observed a hawk family there this summer. So it's been a really special place and I think that our neighbors recognize that and support this plan that Tony has come up with. I think what inspires me the most about this is that Tony, of all the developers that we've worked with over the years. Has come up with a plan that, that really accommodates not only our neighbors, but us and hopefully. The city will realize that we're trying to work out this pathway thing and. We'll, we'll come up with something so that, so that it is. Agreeable. And. I, I guess my vision for it is, as, as, when we're gone, is that this little place will become. Something that maybe future students, forestry students could come and plant little seedlings and. And just recognize how important it is to have a natural landscape in the middle of a sea of subdivisions. So I just appreciate you listening to my story and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mister, Mister Mayor, next is David Para.
Good evening, say your name and address for the record, please.
David Para, four, five, four, six, Daphne Street. Mister Mayor, council members, thank you for hearing me. A little nervous, I don't talk in front of people much because. I usually say what's on my mind, nobody really wants to hear that. I'll stick to the cards. So we've lived on Daphne Street since two thousand. Over the course of time, several developers have come, real estate agents knocked on our doors. And have given us offers, proposals. All the things you would expect from them, all of the proposals came up with unrealistic ideas for Northwest Meridian, N R I's anyway. While working with Tony Sang, his vision for the paraplace subdivision has been well thought out and he has offered and developed a great community. Taking into consideration all of the neighbors wants and needs in the close little area there, not many of us. He has been very thorough and fair to all involved. We have seen that area go from cornfields to neighbors, neighborhoods with parks and schools. We love the area and wanted to stay. Tony worked with us to make our thing, our, our vision and things come to fruition. With moving on after, if this goes through, if you approve it. We plan on staying in the community and being able to provide a house for our sons as well as us. So we can stick around because we like it here. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
You're great.
Mister Mayor, next is Eric Carter.
I'm Eric Carter, fifty three sixty nine North Exeter Way. I just live just north of the, the trees that we keep talking about. We can't say enough about Tony. I don't think you're going to have any neighbors here to say, don't approve it. I think everyone's going to be here to ask you to approve it. I don't know if you've seen that in a long time where you're putting a new development in and neighbors are going. We asked for bigger lots behind, on the very north side of it, added, kept the trees, which was so important to us, we live there, we, I have a picture of an owl. On my back stoop that we know lives in those trees as well, so having that nature around us, it's obviously a great view for us. But it's just really cool and it's so unique and Tony did all of these little things to try and make it better for us. And everyone that's here is here asking for you to approve it. And I don't think you get that too often in a brand new development that's happening right behind development that has even a different, our designation for it too. So we are just saying, we would love for you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Mister Mayor, Ken Tokowitz.
My name is Ken Tokowitz, fifty three eighty one North Exeter. Unfortunately, gentlemen, I have not been privy to the other meetings, I was working with Brody for the last several months. Fortunately, I'm back in town and was able to pretty much get the gist of everything from my other neighbors. We're actually in the corner lot that abuts Black Cat, so we obviously have a tremendous amount of exposure to the poorman's lot and. Really are privileged to all of the things that everybody else has spoken about from the nature escape to just the beauty of seeing the trees. It provides a tremendous amount of benefit. It definitely sounds like everyone is not bored. What I've been told, Tony has done an outstanding job of working relentlessly to make this happen and it seems like it's going to go through. So I'm just here to also give a yay and say, I'd really like to see you guys pass this, we do like the proposal.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Mister Mayor, next is Victoria Tag.
Victoria Tag, I live at forty six twenty five West Houston Creek. I live exactly north of the cul-de-sac that's proposed. And we are so excited about the trees. You've heard a lot about the trees, they are gorgeous, it's what my back porch looks out on. We too have seen the gorgeous birds and the wildlife that lives there, so we're very pleased. Tony has been absolutely wonderful listening to us and, and having us be heard. My only concern at this point is that that cul-de-sac not become a parking lot. I look, I will look directly out at that cul-de-sac and I know there's future talk about the poormans having access to that cul-de-sac if they're ever annexed. I would just hope that cars don't remain there, get parked there, stay there long term. Any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mister Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
I, I can address that concern if, if you would like.
You can certainly take your. You can certainly take a shot at it.
Okay, thank you. So in the fire code, that cul-de-sac, if I remember right, is the minimum size for cul-de-sac. And there will be no parking allowed on that, on the cul-de-sac. It will be signed, no parking, fire lane.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor, there were a couple others, but they didn't say they wanted to speak. So that is everyone that signed up.
If there's anyone else who'd like to write testimony on the site, please come forward at this time. Mister Mayor. Okay, thank you.
I just want to bring up a couple of things in regards to the tree area, which I'm not overly concerned about, but I just want to make sure that we get a really good plan on visibility through that, through those trees without removing as many of them as possible. But again, it does become a little bit of a safety concern if it's dark or it's densely, if it's dense around the pathway. So it's something that we definitely want to take a closer look at and make sure that it is safe for families and people to walk in the evenings and be able to get through that area and enjoy it at the same time.
Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward and provide testimony or may online that would like to provide testimony? If so, use the raise your hand figure. See, no one else would the applicant like to come forward for file comments? So we're, he's waving his. Oh, actually, you're going to have questions. So you probably should come up is what I'm hearing. Say your name and address for the record.
One more thing is that I want to thank all the neighbors coming out. I know it's the personal time and having the support really feels, really feels good. So thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming out.
Mister Mayor. Counselman Hoagland.
Tony, I appreciate you lining this up. This is a unique property. And as you know, being a developer in Meridian, a lot of times for our developments, we want the open space and the common area to be more centrally located. But I think this is a unique situation with very valuable asset of trees and a beautiful location that needs to be protected. And appreciate you working with them. But as we go back to the irrigation area and whatnot, we've got that. I know there was, I think you have a pergola with picnic tables and a tot lot. Where were those going to be? Were those going to be back in the central part or are we back to the tree area?
Currently designed to be in the central part.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Counsel, one, Bert.
It worked, Tony. Just one question as well with that common space area in the middle. Sometimes we don't get too excited about having irrigation ponds and such and use as common space. I understand why in this particular situation it's necessary. But what are you going to do to mitigate the mosquitoes? And I mean, what is, what are you going to do to beautify it and keep it from looking ragged when maybe there's not water in it or when there's water in it, you know, and have it look nice and have it be a real, real public amenity?
Yeah, so our landscaping budget's rather high because we're basing it on the fact that we have, and to address the police is that there's going to be as many lights as we can put on there for the nighttime. Because that was a concern is that we didn't want to turn that into a hazard. So those are all concerns. Our landscaping budget's quite high for this project. You know, we're at 16.8, I think almost 17% open space. So we realize that the money you have to spend, we have a dedicated budget that is, actually, I can pull a little bit more from it. And look, the pair is going to live there. I live less than a mile away. This is in my backyard. We have the budget and we want to make it nice. Now, specifics, if you want to highlight specifics, that you say, hey, Tony, I know you need to do these three things. Again, you probably heard from everyone here, I'm happy to comply. I'm here to make it happen. As long as they're reasonable, if you want me to dome it and glass it, probably a little pushback, but if there's suggestions, we're open to it.
Counsel, one, Bert.
I would really recommend it being like a trophy trout pond. I mean, if you're asking me what I would rather have in that area, I mean, let's put some big old.
We'll look into it.
Okay. At the end of the day, you really don't want counsel designing anything from a dais. I mean, any presenter up here will tell you that will, that never turns out as your favor.
But I like any recommendations that will.
You do. And I just had those one couple of questions you answered.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mister Mayor.
Counselman Kepner.
Tony, I think it's more, again, it's either, you know, permeated stone or something like that. You don't, I live in a neighborhood that has a retention pond that turns into the dog's mud pit, you know, a few times a year. I think you know what you're doing on that and just want to make sure that it serves as the intended amenity for your residents. And I got real confidence that you'll do that.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Counselman Hoagland.
Mister Mayor, question probably for Joe. You know, we talked about the lighting for that wooded area for security purposes. And I'm pretty sure, Joe, the answer is the standards for that lighting still, even though it's for security, will be such that it's not going to be spotlights on neighbor's home and whatnot, that it'll be for that particular area. So just to make sure everyone's on the same page on that, that correct?
Yes, sir. That'll be downlit, absolutely. And probably it'll be like a common street light type of thing. I'm not thinking 25-foot tall poles. No, 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 like very just for the pathway. I was even thinking like, you know, if you go on a college campus, a little tubular-looking ones that just have a little ambient lighting almost to make sure that it's lit. And when you're looking down it, you can see what's on the pathway and adjacent to it, not anything that's going to just completely light up the whole open space area.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, with that.
Also with the, with the pathway, having a buffer of some sort off the pathway. And again, I'm not trying to remove more trees. I don't want to be the bad guy in the room for the night. But again, having some distance off the path is also beneficial from a safety standpoint. You know, a 10-foot buffer on each side, something like that to where it's still natural. It's still a nice walking path, but people can can see in their periphery, you know, what's going on just to keep them safe.
And then back to the theme is I would love the input. You know, I mean, instead of me guessing, if you, if you guys have the time to help out with the design and say, hey, this is how we like to see it. I mean, I hate to say it, I kind of don't care. I care, but I don't care if you make a suggestion that makes sense. Who am I to push back on that? So.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
To that point, I absolutely, with the final plat, I'll bug Tony to give us some more, Tony and Dan, to give us some more sections of it and what that could look like for the pathway for sure. But the existing landscape plan or say the submitted preliminary plat landscape plan does show that the pond has, it's really, it's rock-lined and it's not, it's not just grass and the mud, which I know we don't want at all. I won't call out subdivisions that have had that, but I'll say that we don't want that. And what's shown on the landscape plan does have the rock and all that around the edge, which which will help with a lot of the aesthetic pieces of it. And I'll continue working with the applicant as well.
I'm sorry, I should have probably brought Dan up here for that. He has that kind of, more of that kind of data, so.
Tony, I hear you're a nice guy. That's what is out there in the audience. So I'm going to speak to you as a nice guy and hopefully the poor miss can also hear this guy. I also want to help them whether they realize it or not. But once this project is completed and they are an enclave, if something ever happens with their water or septic, they will be required to hook up to city services. And when that time comes, I can't say what council is going to be up here, but they could likely be asked to put in a full sidewalk at their expense at that time for annexation as well. So in this conversation, I hope that you guys are at least aware of those. I have no idea what the septic's, maybe it's brand new, maybe it's 40 years old, maybe the same with the well. But just so everyone is on the same page going into these assumptions that we're making about roads, about annexation, about things that want everyone to feel protected and not get a side thing in a couple of years. But that would likely be a requirement. So.
And just as a point of fact is we are stubbing all utilities to the property in the future possibility. They know it's going to happen. The question is how long?
Right.
So we're planning for that.
Not so much the annexation, the stubbing is going to be the sidewalk on that that would likely be required at that time. And that's not going to be an. It's one thing to have your utilities go out. It's another thing to have to put in a sidewalk on your property when that comes as a possibility, depending upon where ACHD is at that time. Just, I want to get on the record so that everyone is clear and concise that who knows what council will be here if this will be in a year or that be in five years. But it just needs to be known that those are the types of things that are likely to be required of that property.
Understood.
Okay. I've done my due diligence then. So counsel, any additional comments, questions? Okay.
Big drop. Thank you.
Counsel, do I have a motion?
Mister Mayor.
Counselman Burt.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing, in favor, certified by Saint I.
Aye.
Opposed, eh? Guys, have it. The public hearing is closed.
Mister Mayor.
Counselman Burt.
Other than, do we need to make an addition? Or a change to the approval about the cul-de-sac being extended with like 50 feet? Do we have to say anything about that or?
Mister Mayor, just add that you approved the council waiver.
Okay.
And to have it longer than 500 feet.
Is that the only waiver we're looking for tonight?
Yes, sir.
Mister Mayor.
Counselman Burt.
After considering all staff applicant public testimony, moved to approve file numbers H-2021-0056 and H-2021-0091 as presented the staff report for the hearing date of December 14, 2021, with the following condition, that's to provide a waiver for the cul-de-sac to extend 50 feet to a total of 550 feet.
Second.
I have a motion second. Is there discussion?
Mister Mayor.
Counselman Kepner.
Real briefly, Tony, if you could put together like a Saturday class for how to do infill applications in the city of Meridian, I'd buy the donuts. It's rare. This is my eighth year doing this. And typically, support means that nobody shows up in opposition. And to see a handful of folks from across the area come and speak in support speaks to who you are as an applicant. Look forward to see more applications from you in the future, sir.
I agree.
I have a motion second. Is there any further discussion? If not, quick call roll.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Navinner.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries. Adam is ready to have a good evening. Next item up is public hearing for Outer Banks subdivision, the tenant Meridian H-2021-0063. We will open this public hearing with Steph Cummins.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of the council. The next application before you is a request for a preliminary plat and a conditional use permit. This site consists of 36 acres of land. It's on CC and R40. And it's located at the southwest corner of West Franklin Road and South 10 Mile Road. This property was annexed earlier this year with the requirement of a development agreement. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation is mixed-use commercial, high-density residential and mixed-use residential in the 10 Mile interchange specific area plan. The proposed preliminary plat consists of 25 buildable lots on 36 acres of land in the R40 and CC zoning districts. The plat is proposed to develop in two phases with the portion east of the Kennedy lateral developing first, further revised phasing plan. Kennedy lateral is, runs right through the site right here. West Cobalt Drive, a collector's street, is proposed to be extended from 10 Mile Road to the west boundary of this site, consistent with the master street map and the transportation system map in the 10 Mile Plan. The eastern portion of Cobalt, including a bridge across the Kennedy lateral, will be constructed on this site. And the western portion will be constructed on the adjacent property to the south prior to or with the first phase of development. The proposed street section, as shown, has been deemed to be generally consistent with the associated street section in the 10 Mile Plan. A construction and cooperative development agreement for the construction of Cobalt has been signed between the subject property owner and the property owner to the south in accord with the development agreement. Access is proposed by a West Franklin Road, a commercial arterial, South 10 Mile Road, a residential mobility arterial, and the future extension of West Cobalt Drive, a residential collector's street, as shown on the plat and as noted in the staff report. No stub streets are proposed to the west as none exist to this site. With development of this property based on ACHD's traffic counts, Franklin Road will operate at an acceptable level of service, but 10 Mile will not. It is anticipated to go from level of service D to F, an acceptable level of service is E. Common open space and site amenities for the R4 zoning district is proposed for the subdivision that meet the minimum UDC standards for such. The Kennedy lateral bisects the site, as I mentioned, and is proposed to be piped throughout the development. The proposed conditional use permit is for a multifamily residential development containing a total of 516 dwelling units, consisting of 364 high-density apartments, 126 flats and one, excuse me, 26 townhome-style units are proposed in the R40 and CC zoning districts. A mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units are proposed. Vertically integrated residential is also proposed, but is not part of this application as it's a principal permitted use in the zone. Common open space and site amenities are proposed for the development that comply with the minimum standards. Off-street parking is proposed, as shown on the site plan. A minimum of 898 spaces are required for the multifamily development. 995 spaces are proposed, which include 41 compact spaces, which although discouraged, are allowed to be provided above the minimum required spaces. A minimum of 31 spaces are required for the clubhouse. 31 are proposed. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for the various types of multifamily units proposed in this development, including high-density apartments, flats, and townhome-style structures. All of the structures appear to be of a high-quality design and consist of a complement and complementary mix of materials, including woodlook siding, hardy siding, metal siding, stucco, tile, stone veneer and glazing, and various colors. The high-density and flats are four-story buildings and the townhome-style buildings are three stories in height. The high-density apartments will have secure entrances and be accessed by an internal hallway. The commission did recommend approval of these applications. Summary of the commission hearing, Wendy Shreef, JUB Engineers, the applicant's representative testified in favor along with Lane Borges Heath Clark from Spink Butler. No one testified in opposition and no one commented. No written testimony was received. The applicant requests the extension of Cobalt is within 70 feet of right-of-way as proposed and requests to work with staff on the details of the street section, which they have done. Key issues of discussion by the commission was concern pertaining to traffic generated from the proposed development and its effects on area streets, especially the functionality of 10 Mile Road, which will be at level of service F. Concern pertaining to adequacy of proposed parking in the multifamily development and garages being used as storage instead of parking. A revised site plan was submitted after the commission hearing that provides 87 more spaces than originally proposed. No changes were made to the staff's recommendation. However, the commission did direct the applicant to work with staff on the road section for Cobalt Drive and improve the parking ratios for the development, which I mentioned has been done. Since the commission hearing, the applicant did work with staff on the design of Cobalt, added more parking for the multifamily development, submitted revised plans that reflect the following changes. A redesign of Cobalt Drive that complies with the street section in the 10 Mile Plan is recommended by staff. A redesign of the residential parking areas to provide a surplus of 97 parking spaces above the minimum required. Compact spaces were reduced from 58 to 41 and are provided above the minimum requirements. The garages along the western boundary have been relocated to comply with the minimum setbacks. Carports are depicted that are also required to comply with the minimum building setbacks or be relocated internally. The property lines at Building BF3 have been adjusted to comply with the minimum setbacks. And the sidewalk along 10 Mile Road has been modified to reflect a six-foot-wide detached sidewalk with an eight-foot-wide planter and parkway area. The staff report has been updated to include these revisions. No written testimony has been received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff? Saying now with the applicant like to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Again, I'm Wendy Sharif. I'm a planner with JUB Engineers. And my address is here in Meridian at 2760 Excursion Way, Meridian, Idaho. It's so nice to be here at council. It's sort of been a long road. We were here last summer with our annexation and zoning requests and our concept plan. When we were here originally, we took back a couple of really good ideas. We upped. We upped the amount of commercial we have in the development, which I think was a really positive thing. We're really glad that we did it. And we also reoriented our open space to kind of group it together and move some of our larger multifamily buildings. But I think those are both really positive changes we made, and we made it at the direction of council. So we're back here tonight with what is, I think, comparatively pretty straightforward. At this point, we're here with the preliminary plat so that we can eventually plat this project. We have 25 lots in this preliminary plat, and we are here with a CUP for the multifamily, which you saw previously with our with our concept plan. Again, this project, we are located, we have 36 acres. We're located at the southwest corner of Franklin and 10 Mile. Saying it's going to be a really nice addition to this area. We worked really closely with Sonia and Bill. They've been really great to work with in helping to steer the project to make sure that we meet truly the intent of the 10 Mile specific area plan. And I think what we've definitely what we're showing in the CUP and what you previously seen with our concept plan meets that intent. We worked quite a bit on the alignment of Cobalt and with the neighbor to the south, and those issues have been resolved. We're here with a happy agreement with that property owner. What we're really here for tonight then is the preliminary plat, which is very straightforward. 25 lots, we meet all dimensional standards for the zones that we have. And this will enable for different owners to take, especially with the commercial and the multifamily piece, those to potentially be under different ownership in the future. We're here tonight with our team. We have Lane Borges, who's the architect on the project. We're here with Josh Leonard, who's an attorney with Clark Wardle. And the two developers behind the project are here in person. If you have any questions for them, we have Eric Piliard and Mark Ingstrom are here this evening. So we're here for any questions. We're really hoping we have a positive recommendations tonight. Lane is going to go through and give you a detailed look at the conditional use permit in those multifamily buildings. But we think we have a really great project. It's going to be a really nice addition to this part of Meridian. I think it fits perfectly with that 10 Mile area plan. So I'll let Lane get started. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Lane Borges, representing 10 Mile Franklin LLC Developers. My address, 11500 Armor Court, Gold River, California, 95670. I'm going to try to limit my discussion to three major elements. One, I'd like to kind of just walk you again briefly through the concept behind our project. I know that you've seen it two times prior, but it's been a little while, and I know you see a lot of projects. Second, I want to talk about the issues that Planning Commission directed us to go back and work on and what we were able to achieve doing that. And then third, I want to just review with you a last time kind of the architecture that we're proposing because we're happy and proud of what this project is going to look like and represent to the city. Okay. Okay, our project, I know tonight, you're here to take action on the conditional use permit for the residential portions of the project, but it's kind of hard to break that out on its own without considering how that is a part of this mixed-use development. Because after all, we have 36 acres of commercial, vertically integrated commercial and residential, three types of residential units, and then our recreation center and our co-working facilities. And they all kind of work together. So my little description is going to cover it all, although specifically we're looking at the residential CUP. One of the things that I probably talked about last time and what we were trying to achieve was a goal that created a dynamic place for people to live, to work, and to play with an emphasis on managing pedestrian, vehicular, and bicycle traffic. Some of those words come directly from the 10 Mile specific plan. That was a guiding document that we really paid close attention to. And what we did is picked elements out of the plan that would be necessary in order to achieve those goals. So things like focus on street design and a concept of complete streets, even though in the specific plan it refers to public streets, we tried to incorporate those ideas and philosophies into our internal private street system. Second, the concept of a street-oriented design and streets as public spaces with buildings that are close to the street with pedestrian circulation that allows people to interact and get access to buildings, whether they're commercial or residential easily. Three, an abundance of landscaping and open space. Four, a mixed housing stock, which I already kind of mentioned, we have high-density units, we have flats, we have townhouses, one, two, and three-bedroom. And then five, of course, high-quality building architecture and design. So the next slide kind of illustrates how we were able to achieve that relative to vehicular and bicycle circulation. You'll see on this particular diagram, the red dashed lines represent an internal road system that emulates what the specific plan asks for on public streets, and that is two-way traffic with bike lanes, with parallel parking each side, with street trees, with buildings that are close to the street, so that we create this kind of interactive urban environment, and it all helps to create connectivity from the commercial side to the residential side. The next slide shows kind of the spider web that we have of the pedestrian activity. Obviously, if we're looking to create interaction between residential and commercial, we've got to create an easy way for that to happen. So you'll see there's street crossings everywhere, there's paths everywhere that allow the residential units access to the commercial. We have a path that meanders through the project, a public path that goes from Franklin down to 10 Mile that's through our open space that also connects the site amenities at the same time. So that's kind of just a brief overview of the concept behind how we kind of arrived at the layout to the project. I want to now just take a second and talk about the two issues that Planning Commission kind of sent us back to the drawing boards on. The first one was Cobalt Drive. In our original application, we had a design that had been proposed kind of based on some standards that had been provided to us from ACHD, but were inconsistent with the street sections in the specific plan. So staff recommended we go back and revisit that. So shortly after our Planning Commission hearing, we had a joint meeting with ACHD, with planning staff, with our development team, and basically came up with a solution that provided what the staff was looking for relative to the specific plan, what was acceptable to ACHD, and that's what's reflected in the proposal that's here before you tonight. The second important item that commission asked us to revisit was the parking. Although we had met the minimum parking standards in our original application, we kind of barely met it by a small number of spaces. And staff had suggested that commission bring that up as a discussion item, and commission agreed that it was something that needed to be revisited and that we needed to kind of go back to the drawing boards and see what we could do to increase the parking and to address a concern that some commissioners had about the garages. Now, we don't have an extensive number of garages on the project, but we do have some. We have 50 garages in the high-density portion, and the concern about whether those garages would actually be used for parking, whether they would be used for storage. So what we did is we went back and did redesign on the site. And this chart here kind of gives you a summary of what we were able to do. So now, as opposed to having four surplus spaces, we have 97 surplus spaces on the site. And that is in addition, and I'm going to slide over to our commercial, although it's not part of the CUP, we have an extra 250-some spaces in our commercial component. So we didn't rob from the commercial side in order to create more spaces on the residential side and satisfy the need. We actually went in, redesigned, tightened things up, and created 97 spaces within the residential portion of the site. The other thing that we did is we listened and heard and understand the concern about what happens in parking garage areas. So although management's position is administratively to enforce people parking in their garages, there's a limit to how much you can enforce effectively, and there may be some that slip through the cracks. So in an attempt to minimize that, what we've done is we've come up with a garage design that basically provides storage within the garage spaces. So you'll see in the diagram, we're creating a kind of vaulted garage space with clear-story windows above that creates a large storage area, the entire width of the garage above the car, so that people have a place to put boxes and things that they don't want in their apartment and be able to store them in the garage and still have room for their cars there. In our flats buildings, I don't know if you'll recall, but those buildings have parking on half of the lowest level of those buildings. And in addition to the garages there, we have separate and designated storage units that go with each garage. So aside from the parking space, the units vary in size from about five by seven to about six by nine, depending on the garage space. But we feel pretty comfortable that with a garage design like this that provides that amenity for the tenants and regular enforcement by administration, that we should be able to effectively handle the concern about how the garages are used. The other thing to, I think, keep in mind is that in the redesign of Cobalt, we have additionally provided 37 parking spaces parallel along Cobalt Drive. And while technically we can't count those towards meeting our parking requirement, we can functionally add those 37 spaces to the 97 space surplus that we have. And then third, we also have a parking requirement for our clubhouse, which is quantified as a commercial building. So we have 31 spaces designated for that building. Aside from the probably five to seven spaces that we will need for staff that operate that building and probably five to six spaces that will be designated for prospective tenants coming to visit, realistically, we probably have a surplus of spaces there of maybe in the neighborhood of 15 or so. So when you add all those up, we technically exceed the requirements by 97. We feel like functionally, we probably exceed the requirements by closer to 150. And then the additional 250 space surplus that we have in the commercial side makes us very comfortable that we have adequate parking throughout the project because clearly, we as developers and designers don't want to end up with a project that met the numbers, but functionally doesn't work. It becomes an administrative nightmare and a management nightmare and makes it difficult to lease commercial space when there's not sufficient parking. So that was item number two. And then the last item, I just want to run quickly through the images of the project. So again, refresh you on the quality of the design of the various elements, the articulation of the buildings, the variety of materials. This is our clubhouse and co-work facility. The next is our high-density buildings. No, sorry, actually, these are our flats. So these are the four-story flats with parking on half of the lower level. Next is our three-story townhouses with garages. And then, of course, last is the high-density housing. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Lane, would you just walk us through, you know, I know traffic, these are busy, busy areas, and there were some restrictions ACHD has for right-in, right-out, left-in only. Would you mind just kind of walking us through those intersections real quick to make sure?
Yeah, let me go back to a site plan here so that, okay. So along Franklin Road, the westernmost entrance is full access, right-in, right-out, left-in, left-out. The eastern driveway closest to Franklin is right-in, right-out only. As we turn and go down 10 Mile, the northernmost access is actually right-out only. There's no turning in movements at that intersection. And the southern driveway is right-in, right-out only.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
So Cobalt Drive, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Cobalt Drive is right-in, right-out, left-in, if I remember correctly. Is that correct? Yes, right-in, right-out, left-in. Our drives on Cobalt are full access. And you'll see in the proposed plan, we have designated a right-turn lane that we're providing and a left-turn eastbound lane to our primary entrance. And then we have a secondary entrance with full access at the west corner of the site.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
That's my home.
And if you could remind me, Lane, as you come down Cobalt Drive, driving west, right before you get to the property, was that a fire access or is that full access into the apartments there right at the western boundary?
That is a, that is a full access. Okay.
And another follow-up question, not traffic-related. Mr. Mayor, I drive past that every day, and I happen to notice all the tiles are out there ready for the Kennedy lateral. And I thought, well, that's an awful lot. I think in the preliminary plans, you're going to have some open areas, but it looks like that has, that has changed.
Yeah, originally, when we brought the project before you for our annexation and rezone, we also asked for your approval to leave the channel open in portions as an open space amenity. Once we actually got in and started working with NMID on it, it became clear that that was going to be a bit of a challenge. There was also a concern, and it was brought up earlier about, I think, one of the other projects about, well, what does that ditch look like during the portion of the year that we're coming up on when there's no water in there? What does it look like when we have to fence it? What is the access roadway that NMID wanted going to look like? And it became clear to us that probably the easier and better solution was to go ahead and pipe it, although it came at a higher cost. It allowed us to resolve a lot of problems and issues, and so that's what we have before us tonight. Okay.
One last question.
Councilman Holton.
Now, thank you for that. I kind of figured there was some good reasoning behind it. But one of the things that we're dealing with in Meridian, especially when it comes to, you know, multifamily complexes, is parking, and I appreciate you stepping up and working with staff and increasing parking. But, and we see it in the single-family neighborhood, is where you have people who are on-call providing services, whether it's heating and cooling, plumbing, utility. We have people who are in the contract business. They have trucks with trailers. And they're usually out in the street parking because they got their vehicles in the driveway. But those same things are happening in multifamily units, and we're finding, and we know that staff is going to be working on parking plans for multifamily down the road. Are there places that people, because you're going to have folks who are going to be on-call, and they provide a valuable service to people in our community. When your heating goes out and it's, you know, 20 degrees out and you want heat, and they've got a big service truck, they have to park somewhere. Do you have places that they can park those vehicles? Again, this isn't in our UDC yet, but it's just trying to think resolving real-world problems that we're facing right now that, you know, you've got these people, they want to live in your units, but where do they park these bigger trucks or vans or vehicles?
I mean, specifically at this point in time, that wasn't a consideration that really came to mind. At this point, because of maybe the foresight of staff to have us go back and look at our parking situation, we probably have the ability, if it were directed, to go back and look at creating some places that could accommodate some larger vehicles. I think staff mentioned briefly that the majority of our spaces are all standard size, but we do still have, out of the 97 surplus, we have 41 that are compact. Now, the reason we have those is not so much because we save space or we squeezed in more parking because the city standards require a compact space to be the same width as a standard space, but they're allowed to be shorter. So what it allowed us to do was to create areas for trees or more trees in the parking lots where we could have head-to-head parking with a planter in the middle of those spaces. But we certainly have the ability to go back and look at creating some spaces that maybe are sized a foot or two wider, a few feet longer in certain areas in order to handle some larger vehicles.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I appreciate that. And again, this is not something that's required by the city. It's just one of those things we're running into more and more often. And so it's just, we encourage you to kind of find those spaces for.
Well, yeah, and it actually may be a good idea because what happens is somebody can't fit into one, they park into. So now, instead of losing one and a quarter, you've lost two spaces. So now instead of losing one and a quarter, you've lost two spaces. So net overall, it'd probably be to our benefit to look at trying to do something.
Mr. Mayor and Lane, yes, and we're finding, they're finding other places to park those rigs and they're out on the street. They're in businesses, they're over in the next neighborhood and it just causes a problem for everybody. So the more we.
Next one.
Hit on that. So anyway, just something I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Cavan.
Lane, I think the. There's no, I guess, beating around the bush on this. I was campaigning this year and I was out in that part of town and with out of doubt, the number one frustration is about traffic. And the concerns from folks that live in this part of area and further down. Really are frustrated with their commute times. They obviously associate it with growth. So when I see that ACHD comes back with a level of service of F, it raises my eyebrows. And so I guess. I'm asking you to help me understand how I can get over that hurdle. The feedback that I heard from our residents with this being a concern. They already think it's bad. That's when it's a D and now we're going to jump to F, how, how this makes sense to really benefit our, our current residents.
A legitimate concern and I'm going to turn it over to the traffic expert standing next to me. Uh, he's partner Josh.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Berman.
Same question.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Josh Leonard of Clark Wardle. Address is two fifty one East Front Street, number three, ten in Boise. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to kill two birds with one stone. Uh, as you noted, our TIS did indicate that, uh, that we reached level of service F. On, on ten mile, I'd note that that's only one hour a day. Uh, that's during the peak PM hour. Otherwise, we achieve those levels of service that are, that are required of us through there. Appreciate, I, I'm living in Eagle and before that in Meridian, appreciate the concerns and probably heated complaints that you got about commute time. Uh, and certainly recognize, recognize that. Couple of things, as you know, the project has been, or the property's been annexed and is approved with a, a fairly specific site plan. And zoned in the, in a way that entitles development. And we're constrained a little bit by that zoning just because we can't come in with single family homes or something that's, that's much less than, than what we've proposed. The other, the other thing that we're constrained by is, and I want to. Preface this by saying, we appreciate that you wanted more commercial. Uh, it does bring with it additional traffic. Uh, and that's one of the, one of the, or one of the bases for that, that failure at that PM peak hour. I, I also wanted to point out that the, the applicant and. Developer has proposed some, some alternative mitigation for the, the site to help eliminate or alleviate some of those traffic concerns. Multi-use pathways, widening the sidewalk along ten miles, some other things. Obviously, it's not going to take care of all of the traffic. It'll take care of a little bit of it. Perhaps the most importantly and most persuasively, the, the. Our TIS, the approval of our TIS happened, it, it predated. I, uh, the transportation department's announcement of, of Highway sixteen extension being fully funded. Uh, and now that they've announced that, that being fully funded, uh, and even announced start dates. Coming up next year and a two to three year completion. Barring any, any delays, they should be bringing that online about the time the traffic starts to move out of this, uh, from this development. Maybe we predate it just a little bit. One quote I wanted to read to you from ACHD's project report. The completion of construction of, of State Highway sixteen from Chinon Boulevard to Interstate eighty four within the next five years. And this is again, the quote, will divert a significant amount of traffic from ten mile road to State Highway sixteen in order to reach I eighty four. Again, not taken into account, just given the timing and of the, the TIS and its approval. I'd also note just that, that the Ada County Highway District's report didn't recommend any additional traffic mitigation in part because. Ten mile is built out. It's a, there's just nowhere to go. Exactly. So. The, the proposal is with one hundred percent within the, the specific area plan as well as the, the master street map. And we did what we could and we're relying on, on State Highway sixteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
Josh, am I, am I hearing you correctly that you think that it's more the, the commercial aspect that's going to generate that PM peak traffic than the multi-family? Cause again, I'm, I'm not the traffic engineer, but to me that seems contrary to, to what I would think.
I appreciate the clarification that, um, mayor, members of council. What I should have said is that it contributes to it, not the primary driving force behind that PM. Certainly not. It's obviously going to be the resident.
Thanks.
Counsel, any additional questions for traffic or the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Berman.
Josh, to your point, to the comments from ACHD and the staff report and Highway sixteen being the. Made perhaps the saving grace to the. Thirty six thousand average daily trips on ten mile. Do you think this project should be? Would be in much greater jeopardy and perhaps a problem for the community long term if you didn't have Highway sixteen. If that additional added capacity wasn't available, that the city would look at this and should look at this entirely differently?
Mr. Mayor and, and members of the commission, and I, I appreciate that council member, uh, Borden. I don't think it would be in jeopardy, but I think it would require a little bit different look at this. And I think that the Highway sixteen being in there is, is. That announcement is fortuitous, the development of this, of this property. I'll also note though, that in addition to, to. Not recommending or requiring any mitigation along ten mile, as we mentioned a minute ago. There, there's just really no place, no place to go and, and it's been designed as, as outlined in the master street map.
And that being primarily because there is no additional expansion of ten mile available. I mean, that's fully built out. So. They couldn't make a recommendation to provide additional capacity on ten mile.
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Berman.
Mr. Leonard, just remind me of the phasing plan one more time. I know it's been talked about, I just need to remember.
All right, I can do it really briefly and then I'll let Lane talk a little bit more about it. East of the Kennedy lateral phase one, along with the, the road Cobalt. That's on, on the developer's property and back to the back, I believe it's all phase one.
Yeah, as far as the residential components of the project, everything north and east of the existing canal. So that would include the three flats buildings. It would include the three townhouse buildings. It would include the clubhouse. And phase two, and along with that would be Cobalt Drive. Phase two of the residential portion would be all of the high density buildings that are south and west of the canal.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Roughly year twenty twenty three, I mean, any idea?
On all of that?
On that high density portion, when you get to phase two, I'm sure you're.
Probably started in twenty two, not completed until twenty three for the high density. I think the intent is to have elements of the first phase open in twenty two. And roll, I mean, we will probably start on phase two before, it's not a matter of. Let's finish phase one and get it rented out and then we'll start phase two. This is just a matter of resources and how much we can physically take on and manage at one time. The important parts from a marketing standpoint is obviously the clubhouse and then having product available. For the prospective tenants and having a variety. So by doing the flats and the townhouses, we have basically one, two and three bedroom units available.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, can we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Well, if there's anybody who would like to provide testimony on this item, if you'd like to come forward at this time. To do so, or if there's anybody online that would like to provide testimony, if you can use the raise your hand. And not seen anybody that would like to provide testimony. But the applicant liked to make any last comments.
Really, the only comment I think I'd like to offer is to. Thank the council for some of their direction when we were going through the previous process. Thanks staff for their suggestions and planning commissions directives. I think at the end of the day, we have a better project. We have a little more commercial space. We have more open space. We have buildings. That interface better with the open space. We have more parking. I think it's been a win win experience for us through the whole process. I just want to thank the city for their help and cooperation in allowing us to design a great project for the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
But you know, for a project this big, maybe if we have discussion and without closing the public hearing, it might be a good thing in case some other questions come up that we can. Respond to. One of the things that occurred to me and I gave some thought to as I was going through the packet and reading and especially the transportation portion and the questions came out about. The functionality of ten mile road and whatnot and, and you know, you know, this, this is eventually going to be a very big project and has an impact. I do travel ten mile every day and there are times you just, if you want to get somewhere in a hurry, don't. And it's a certain time, you don't take ten mile. It's just the fact of the matter is, but if you wait a little while, it will clear out and, and you can move on. And, and you know, I look at this project's very big, but it's, it's following the plan that the city laid out. It's, it's. How we want things. It's got the commercial elements. And I think if, if we're that concerned about ten mile road that we thinking that, well, we shouldn't approve it because it's going to impact the road too much. We should be thinking about the, the development we just approved. Earlier tonight is, and that's the fact of. Does all development going to use, have an impact on ten mile road? And which it will. And so we should be working from this site going out in terms of approvals. You know, when you have your core, when you think about transportation and they're accessing the freeway. And the other thing that, so it just makes me think, do we say no to something like this, which meets all the requirements? When we need to be looking on the outer edges of develop, that we're approving developments because they are also impacting ten mile. And the other thing is we, we have no say over what Star Middleton Northeast Canyon County does. They're coming down to ten mile to get access to the freeway. I see the license plates. Every day, we, we know they're doing it. You know, if we could shut that off, hey, we got plenty of room, you know, but we, we can't do that. So. You know, looking at it from a transportation perspective, will this impact that road? Yes, it will. Is that reason to, to say no based on transportation? I, I have a hard time doing that. Just because of. We just have to be thoughtful. If, if, if the road, just like schools, if they're to that point of not working. Then we have to look at our process of how we're going to approve things if we approve things in these areas that are funnels. Into this, into this roadway. So that, that was the big issue I had is trying to figure out that transportation component because it does have. An impact in a, in a major impact. On that. And, and we know the turn lane coming onto the freeway. And to me, that's, that's being short sighted by our, our road departments, not planning that far enough in advance, just like they did Eagle Road many years ago, when they put one lane coming in. Had to go back, redesign the whole thing because they didn't. Think far enough down the road and we're growing even faster now and. And, and I know some of it's budget related and there's nothing they can do about that, but. Just, just to speak to the transportation component of that, that's, that's just kind of my thinking on that. There might be other elements that could. Make me go, oh, maybe not, but that's from a transportation standpoint. I think we'll have to make work with what we have and hopefully. That Highway sixteen extension does get through in a, in a timely fashion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Councilman Hildman frames it well. Um, it's relatively straightforward at this stage. Primarily because it's a P plat and the, and a CUP. This is the annexation and zoning. Josh is correct in that it's entitled property and. This is in fact what we intended here. It's consistent with the future land use map. It has high density residential where it was intended. I think it's a beautiful design. I think it has been improved through this process greatly at P and Z and. And through the council's discussion. So I think the applicant's done a good job. The remarks that I questioned, uh, Mr. Leonard on with regards to Highway sixteen, I'll circle back to later. There's a broader policy issue that. Is outside this conversation, but that added capacity long term does provide some. Certain relief to how ten mile, um, is impacted with traffic here and, and upstream. So I, I think that's a critical piece of the puzzle. But for a CUP application in the preliminary plat. I think this hits all the marks with what was intended to be in this area. And so I'm supportive of the application as presented today.
Councilman Cavan.
Happy to add my thoughts as well. And I, I agree a lot with what. Councilmember Borden and Hogan have said. But I think Councilmember Hogan at least touched on something that I've, I've wrestled with, which is sometimes we'll get an application and. It'll show that a, a middle school is going to be, the application is going to drain two or three, or maybe ten students over what that school can handle and. Sometimes I hold my nose and roll with that. And then sometimes we see an application and it's just flooding that school that's already over capacity with more students. And I have to say. Is it, is it worth pressing pause? And Mr. Leonard is, is correct. This has been annexed and I don't think that I've got any. Harpened with approving the preliminary plat. I guess it's the CUP to me that I see the place that would be the appropriate spot to press pause. I love this project and I think that the applicant has done a really commendable job of taking the feedback from the council to make it really special. In a special part of town. But I've, I've also got a, I hear in the back of my mind that many of the folks that I heard from, and I know will continue to hear from to say. Ten miles are already overtaxed. And I, I know that ACHD says it's a D and I think if you pulled. You know, a hundred drivers on ten mile at five o'clock, you'd probably get one answer. They'd all say it's passed an F. And so. I'm struggling with being supportive of granting the CUP tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
This may be something that, that legal. Provides input on, but. I'm not certain if, if, if there's a design, and I understand the logic behind that. And that's what I was hinting at is some broader comments. That, that are going to come later on this exact issue. I think, uh, Councilman Cavanner points it out, but. Annexation is the stage most certainly to pause. If it's necessary, if there's a capacity issue, be it schools or roads, if there's a belief that we don't have the ability to serve. A component, I think that's where that has to occur. I don't know if that can occur in a CUP application. I don't know what the condition we would. Place upon it. To allow that to happen. So I. I understand the, the comments, but not certain that's an option here, but very well could be mistaken. So maybe Mr. Nary needs to. Correct that if that's not right.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, council board, and I mean. You, you hit the nail on the head. I mean, the reality is conditional uses are allowed uses with conditions. And not to make it sound so simple, but the reality is, is those are allowed uses and that's what these are. The, there is a language in the conditional use ordinance in the UDC. That it says that proposed use will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services that the highways, streets, parks, police and fire protection. I think the conundrum here is the relief for this is a different roadway. So it's not widening this roadway. It's not adding more capacity. Roadway, simply. Another highway that's going to get constructed over the next five years. So is it being adequately served? Well, I think what I heard Mr. Leonard say. It is adequately served because again, it's a very minimal amount of time that it's F. It's at the maximum capacity they can do anyways. So there's no other relief. That the highway district or ITD can do to make this different. So it, it may be difficult to make that, that's the only finding in here that I see. That is what your folks are all talking about. But I have a concern that really, as you stated, party's been annexed, you know, that, if that decision. That this couldn't serve this because this is very similar to what you saw at the annexation stage. It may be a little difficult to defend that particular finding. Without a little bit more aggression. without a little bit more aggression and a little bit more
And, and is, you know, it is a weird concept that we're talking about even in some regards where it's the right there at the exit to the interstate. Whereas, you know, on one hand, we can say, well, look what ITD has done on the Eagle Road exit. They've extended that to four lanes wide, going back three quarters of a mile because Eagle Road couldn't handle the traffic. So there are mitigations that the state system can do to allow it to occur. And quite frankly, you could probably argue Eagle Road is a, a challenge because of developments that are being improved in the city of Eagle as much as the last one in on the road, or in this case, the very first one in on the road in a lot of ways. You know, it's like, so what breaks the camel's back? The first one closest or the one furthest away? That you do or do and don't, or who got there first versus who's there now?
It's an interesting conversation, but I do go back to, you know, at least I, I felt like this project has been well put together from, from the get-go. With the improvements, it's gotten better with the improvements along the way to where we are here today. But if this is the one that breaks the camel's back, that's so close to our major, major corridors, which are all improved. Franklin's improved, Overland has been improved, 10 Mile's been improved. We have an interchange. If we were to say that this is where the transportation challenge is, what about the stuff that's going to happen on the east side of this road? It hasn't come in yet, which has as much, if not more, traffic generation with the next project. Very philosophical if we want to start having those conversations about this location where we've invested in an urban rural district, where we've invested in a 10 Mile specific plan, where we are putting our public transportation, where we are, again, a lot of investment in, in this specific properties right here. There are problems downstream though. We know that. Problems of the east or west with roadways that aren't improved. So just two cents. Public hearing is still open.
We're thinking. No.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglen.
I wouldn't mind, you know, having this discussion if, if the developer wants to weigh in and, and provide thoughts on this. I, you know, invested a lot and I'm sure they want us to move forward, but there are any arguments that we're missing on, on this discussion primarily related to traffic and mitigation and those types of things. So I would, I would mind to hear from them.
Thank you. Eric Peelagard, representing Mark Engstrom and myself. We started with the process with that traffic impact study through Kittleson, who designed the whole specific plan area and worked with the city on that. He came back with the recommendations and then ACHD got ahold of it. And we knew that obviously a traffic and I was surprised because we are so close to the, to the intersection. It's a communicative effect of all the other projects that are feeding down 10. You're absolutely right. I don't think that we could have a good chance before you tonight if we didn't have ACHD's approval. They are recommending approval for the project. We're going to pay our fees. They've had some mitigation for the, the pathways and walkways. I asked them if they could give me a recommendation somewhere in there that says, once Highway 84, no, excuse me, 16 is built, what happens to our level of service? They said, it's obviously going to go back down to normal. D, where it is today. But I said, that normal, correct. But could I get that in writing? They say, no, because we have to build it first. And then we'll do the study with the traffic counts. So if they came with a recommendation for denial based on traffic, I would have a hard time here. But they're the traffic experts. We hired Kittleson. And it is for that one hour peak time. And that's why we created this live and workplace. So that's kind of my comment. We didn't have their approval. I would say, okay, I don't maybe have a leg to stand on, but they do govern traffic from our perspective as a developer.
From our perspective as well.
So I don't, I don't know if that answers your question or, or gets you to the right spot. But, you know, we are kind of the central hub close to the interchange. And we are limited on the ride in and ride out. So we don't have those full access issues, which would slow it down. It was a challenge getting those access points.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
My assumption, I, I think I'm going to answer this, but I'm just curious. Did, did you have any conversations with the Highway District about the impact of each phase and how that triggers a change from D to E and from E to F? Or is phase one automatically turns to F?
No, it, it's, it's not just phase one. No, it's the community of the, the entire project from the, you know, it's peak hour trips, right? So it's when the stores open, you know, the peak hours they come in, when they leave is the peak hours when they go home to work. But that is actually, while we have the live work area there, the idea is, is that hopefully they don't do a lot of driving. And if they do drive, they use Cobalt to go over to the business offices that are right there, you know, across the street on, on the Brighton development side. The idea is, is that hopefully by combining the mixed use, it all works together versus building a way out using that traffic.
Yeah.
Hopefully that helps.
Mayor, members of the council, the only thing I had and, and it, it was just mentioned, the fact that it is a live work site and that we're trying to retain, retain traffic onsite. Appreciate the discussion about traffic. Obviously it's a hot topic and it's important both macro and micro. Uh, and, and as has been mentioned a couple of times, that's probably more appropriate for, at the annexation stage when we're looking at it. And, and as we mentioned, we, the, the development agreement that came with annexation and initial zone, he included a pretty specific concept plan that, that included many of these uses. And the only thing we added was a little bit more commercial. Based on the recommendation from, from the Highway District, the, the fact that really a, a conditional use is an approved use subject to conditions to, to mitigate any kinds of adverse impact. And there not being mitigation onsite or additional mitigation onsite or on the adjacent roadway. I think that there's a, I, I think, I'm going to say that the answer is clear. It's easy to say that from my perspective, from where I stand, but I, but I think the answer is, the answer here is clear.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I, I, I thank you, Mr. Leonard. I, I, I'm looking at this project and I was in support of annexation before. And you guys have came a long ways. Um, I feel like you've listened and you've dotted your i's and crossed your t's and you've worked with your neighbors. I guess that would be to the south. With regard to Cobalt, I know that was a sticking point before. Excited to see what these commercial buildings are going to be. Who's going to move into them? I like the connectivity throughout the entire project. I, I think it's just an interesting project. It's a, it's a huge project, but it sort of doesn't, it's, uh, it's really hard to get a community feel with this type of project with so many different uses. And I think that you've accomplished that. The, the, the big, the big elephant in the room is, 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 is the traffic aspect of it for sure. And it's, uh, we, I, I really do appreciate our, our working relationships with our regional partners. And one of those regional partners is ACHD. I don't know if my decision with annexation would have been any different, knowing that, you know, the traffic on that area is an F as opposed to what, what the consultant mentioned that it was, you know, information, information given during the the annexation, previous annexation discussion. I, I do believe that our hands are somewhat tied though. I think that, I think that Mr. Leonard, you've nailed, nailed it. And you've been very concise and, and I think that we're past the point of, in my opinion, denying this project or continuing this project because of, uh, traffic. So I can't wait till Highway 16 is built. It's going to be a big game changer for our, not only, I, I think for the entire Treasure Valley, honestly, for the entire region. So I, I think I'm supportive of this application as a stance.
Or, or because it probably wasn't in the traffic study, as soon as Lender Road Overpass gets built, that's got to take traffic off this area as well. Just throw that out there to council.
Yeah, listen, you don't have to talk to us and isn't that, I think, I think we allocated $2.5 million of that project, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely. There's more that can be done.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglen.
If we want to move forward, I would move that we close the public hearing on this item. H 2021 dash 0063.
Second, I have a motion second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the discussion tonight and it, it, you know, there are a lot of implications to this and, and future implications in terms of traffic on, on 10 Mile Road and what we need to look at with Highway 16 and, and those types of things. But, uh, as, as, as was stated by Councilman Borton and others about where we are in this process, the work that they've done to come to, to meet all the standards and requirements that, that we laid out. And the approval by partner agency ACHD for this, I, I would move approval of H 2021 dash 0063 after hearing from all staff and applicant testimony. And as presented in this hearing date of today, and also would also reflect the acceptance of the revised changes as provided by staff and the applicant that were outlined in the staff report in that approval.
Second, I have a motion. A second, is there a discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I do want to ask, did I miss anything in, in that? Because I think we did want to include those revised changes that were included in the staff report. And I was looking, referring to at the bottom of the report that we get here, outstanding issues, items, number one, redesign of Cobalt that complies, redesign of the residential parking area. The garage is along the western border boundary, property lines at building F3 and the sidewalk along 10 Mile. So I assume those were included in the report and I'm, want to reflect that we're including those as well.
Second agrees. Second agrees. Is there further discussion on the motion? Are there comments before we vote? With that, call their own.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Borton.
Bye.
Thank you, Cavanagh.
Bye.
Huglen.
Hi.
Bye.
All eyes, motion carries and the item is agreed to. Council, we're going to go ahead and take about a 10 minute break so that any little guys that need to go outside can get, get that break. Joe's got a little puppy at his house. I don't know what's going on. We'll take a 10 minute break and be back about 25 after. We'll take a 10 minute break and be back about 25 after. Mr. Borton, are you back?
Yep.
All right, then we'll go ahead and come back from recess. And we will move on to our next item this evening, public hearing for Aviator Springs, H 2021-0065. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next and last application before you tonight is a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 40 acres of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County and is located at 3235 North McDermott Road. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is mixed use neighborhood. The applicant is requesting annexation of 40 acres of land with R8 zoning, which consists of 31.59 acres, LO zoning, which consists of 1.64 acres, and ME zoning, which consists of 6.77 acres. The applicant proposes to develop the site with 93 single family residential detached homes at a gross density of three units per acre or 4.38 units per acre, if only the developable areas included in the calculations excluding the street buffer along future State Highway 16, an LDS seminary and donation of a lot to the Boys and Girls Club for a facility on the west side of future State Highway 16 and research and development uses on the east side of State Highway 16. Staff believes the proposed development plan is generally consistent with the vision of the comprehensive plan per the analysis in the staff report. Although the proposed density is below that desired in mixed use neighborhood designated areas of six to 12 units per acre, and there are no supporting services for the residential development, staff believes the proposed development is appropriate for this area based on the lack of access available to the site from collector and/or arterial roadways. The proposed uses will provide a mix of uses as desired in the comprehensive plan, i.e. residential, civic and commercial. And LDS seminary and Boys and Girls Club will provide religious and childcare facilities within close proximity to the high school on the abutting property to the west, which will be a benefit for area residents and the community. If council feels additional housing types, i.e. alley loaded, single family residential attached townhomes, should be provided, it should increase the density for the development. Staff did not include a recommendation for additional housing types to be provided due to the limited access available in this area and lack of employment uses provided in the residential area. Given the limitations with surrounding land uses, existing development pattern, poor access and bifurcation of the property with the extension of State Highway 16, it is not feasible to achieve full integration of uses as desired in mixed use neighborhood designated areas. However, the applicant's narrative does discuss how they believe the proposed development is consistent with the mixed use neighborhood designation. A preliminary plat consisting of a total of 112 lots consisting of 93 buildable lots and 13 common open space lots on 31.59 acres of land in the R8 zoning district is proposed as shown, two buildable lots on 1.64 acres of land in the LO zoning district, and one buildable lot on 6.77 acres of land in the ME zoning district. So just to show you where we're at here, these two lots right here are the LO zoned, proposed to be LO zone lots. And then over here on the east side is the ME zoning. There are three future right of way lots on a total of 48 acres of land on the preliminary plat area. Two phases of development are proposed as shown. The first phase is the area on the west side of future State Highway 16. And the second phase is the ME zoned area on the east side. Access is proposed to the western portion of the development via the extension of two local streets from the north from Chucker Ridge subdivision. Future State Highway 16 is planned to bicycle this site on Lot 1 Block 5. Access is proposed to the eastern portion of the site via North McDermott Road. Direct access via future State Highway 16 is prohibited. One stub street is proposed to the south for future extension and interconnectivity. Qualified open space is proposed in excess of UDC standards. Based on the area of the plat, which is 48, excuse me, 40 acres, a minimum of four acres is required, 10%. 7.64 acres or approximately 23.8% of common open space is proposed, which includes a large common open space area adjacent to future State Highway 16, which will provide a buffer to residential uses. A minimum of two qualified site amenities are required. A swimming pool with changing rooms, pedestrian pathways, additional qualified open space of at least 20,000 square feet in area and children's natural play structures are proposed as amenities in excess of the minimum standards. As noise attenuation for future State Highway 16, a six foot tall berm and six foot tall wall on top of the berm is required within the street buffer consistent with the adjacent developments that have been approved to the north of this site. Conceptual building elevations for the residential portion of the development were submitted as shown. The non-residential buildings are required to comply with the design standards in the architectural standards manual. The commission did recommend approval of these applications. Matt Adams from the land group, the applicant's representative testified in favor. No one testified in opposition. Todd Tucker, Boise Hunter Homes commented on the application. He is requesting the stub street to the south is shifted approximately 45 feet to the east so that it abuts the east side of future State Highway 16 right of way to provide a better alignment with the street connection plan to the south on the Boise Hunter Homes property. And just to note, if this were to happen, it appears there wouldn't be adequate area for the required street buffer along future State Highway 16. So staff is not supportive of that request. Key issues, Boise Hunter Homes requested that, again, as I mentioned, the stub street to the south be shifted further to the east to align with the planned location of the street and the future development. And the applicant stated that they'd like to pursue development of the LDS seminary and residential portions of the development first and restrict development of the Boys and Girls Club lot until a second public street access is available consistent with the ACHD conditions of approval. Key commission or discussion items by commission was the single public street access to this development and secondary emergency access and parameters of the ME zoning district. The commission did not make any changes to the staff recommendation and there really are no outstanding issues for council tonight. There were several letters of testimony that were received, all in support of the LDS seminary building from Bart Hamilton, David Austin, Holly Miller, Jen Johnson, Jennifer Reese, Lanson Cammy Olson, Miley Thomas, Matthew and Nicole Garnett, Megan Roos, Trish Dildene, Troy Ball, Greg Borup, Paula Horziger and Melanie Evans. Matt Adams, the applicant, did submit comments today in agreement with the commission recommendation. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Senator. Counsel, any questions? Okay, the applicant like to come forward?
Thank you. Good evening, Matthew Adams, 462 East Shore Drive, Eagle, Idaho. I'm here to help get Highway 16 built, since it goes through my project, which helps everybody. And Sonia, can you put my slideshow up? And thanks to the folks that stayed for this presentation. Thank you. All right, so I'm excited to be here presenting an exceptional project. Aviator Springs is the right community in the right location at the right time. Tonight, what I want to go over is how we align with the comprehensive plan and the context of Aviator Springs, which is really difficult to see without looking at the field subarea plan and the surrounding area. I want to talk about the community highlights, our community partners that have made this happen, and then some specifics that Sonia alluded to at the P and Z commission hearing. And then ultimately, we are requesting approval of annexation, rezone and preliminary plat. So how do we align with comprehensive plan? Well, we are a premier community. We're making an investment in 93 homes for Meridian families. We are an evolving community responding to the fields subarea plan with major investment in what we consider resilient open space. We are a livable community promoting family friendly recreation for healthy living, focused on natural systems for stormwater management, cooling of air, sightlines off of the project. And we're also promoting public safety by implementing crime prevention through environmental design. This will be a vibrant community. We are adjacent to the activity centers of the high school and a future elementary school as well as many, many future amenities as part of this subarea plan. And we are making a nod to or celebrating the history of the site as agricultural through our open space and play design. We're a connected community with safe and efficient transportation, excellent connectivity to local streets, and we are partnering with ITD to ensure Highway 16 infrastructure can successfully move forward. So this is the field subarea plan that I've referred to a couple of times. And what we're specifically talking about is this southeast quadrant and then more specifically, the very corner of that area. I do want to thank the city and Logan Simpson for assisting us in providing these background graphics. So Aviator Springs integrates into the subarea plan and surrounding development patterns beautifully. We integrate by focusing on land use, transportation, economics and the parks and pathways. So if you look at that area plan and that new Highway 16 as an edge, our density is appropriate for this area. All right, let's talk about our specific project. Our project land use, as Sonia said, we have R8 in the yellow. We've got the LO in the blue and then we have our mixed employment in the purple. So we have three distinct zoning types and four distinct uses. Circulation, we feel is excellent because it provides for a lot of off-street Circulation, we feel is excellent because it provides for a lot of off street circulation, so we've got good, good automobile circulation, we're stubbing to the north and south. Which is the only available connectivity we have for automobiles and then we have great walking access. We are connecting to what will be pathways north of us on Five Mile Creek. And we have walking ability to the elementary school in the future and to the high school today. Amenities, we're really proud to be going above and beyond the amenity package and providing. A really great amount of open space. All right, specific amenities pathways. Pathways comes up big when when your team does surveys and we think that people's ability to walk in loops and. Different figure eight patterns and things within their neighborhood and good distance while feeling safe on local streets and pathways is very important. And we propose multiple types of pathways so that people of all abilities can access them. A pool is always a great amenity. People really enjoy that you can walk to the pool, you can reserve the cabana on the side and have birthday parties. And then we also have the small, well, twenty thousand square foot soccer playfield in the southwest corner of the development. What I'm most proud of is our open space buffer along the east edge of the project now, we have to have, we're required to have a thirty five foot wide buffer. We have provided a fifty foot minimum with buffer, which is more generally greater than a hundred feet. Which places the closest home to highway 16 at two hundred feet from the roadway. Within that buffer, we're providing stormwater management. We're cooling the air, which is important. And we're doing sight and sound buffering from the highway. We're proposing water wise, climate appropriate landscape, we're actually looking at a hotter climate. We want the HOA to be able to afford to maintain this in the future. Provide habitat value, a unique aesthetic and minimize maintenance. Pathways meander through the community with pedestrian bridges, undulating grade, and we create a sense of place. We also provide nature play. So we have unstructured play for kids in a safe and contained environment. Natural creative play is proposed for the site, which creates a unique experience, it encourages exploration and engagement with the with the environment. Free range kids. Here's some images of some of that nature play feature that we think is appropriate. We will have hopefully some areas of mud for kids to play in. But no mosquitoes. What about trout ponds? And there's no trout ponds at the current time. And Sonia, I can't get it to advance. There we go. Just an artistic rendering of what that buffer could look like so that you can get a sense of what the sound attenuation wall. Looks like different pathway systems and then play equipment in the middle. All right, we do, of course, want to show our architectural character. The homes are planned as one and two story, single family detached. The homes will be designed in what's, I guess, now, I have traditional theme written here, but it's West Meridian traditional, I suppose. They'll be constructed using a variety of high quality materials, including cultured stone accents and siding. Buildings should be designed with elevations that create interest through the use of broken panes, windows, fenestrations. And produce a rhythm of materials and patterns, we do, because we face highway 16, we have a lot of homes, we have to have all sides that look nice. So these homes will be four sided aesthetic. Here's some view of the two story units. All right, I, it's important to me that to talk about partners, a project like this. Requires a lot of energy, a lot of time, a lot of investment and a commitment from many, many people. So I just want to acknowledge the city of Meridian, West Ada School District, Idaho Transportation Department, Ada County Highway District. And Napa Meridian Irrigation District as agency partners. Of course, the LDS church, which plans to develop the seminary and the Boys and Girls Club, which we have a desired partnership on a donated parcel. Also, the development team, Jeff, Nick, Larry, Ryan, Wade and Brady, and then my team Tyler, Chad, Jim, Mike, Dan, Ben, Dustin and Dylan. So now to the nuts and bolts, the staff reports and conditions, we have no objection. To the city staff report or the ACHD staff report. So that's good. I do want to talk about some specifics that came up during P and Z that are important. The first is secondary access, so. We are, we have main access on Achievement Street from the north. It comes into Chucka Ridge, which is under construction, we're submitting final plat shortly and that enters into the site. We do not have access to the south yet, but we're stubbed for that and we're, we're hopeful for that to come soon. So we've coordinated with the fire department, police department and West Ada School District to provide a secondary route through the high school site to this project. At the P and Z hearing that it wasn't depicted clearly how you get through the high school site. So this graphic is to show you more clearly that access route. This is on a recorded access agreement that's been signed by the school district and the landowner for this project. Also, we're excited to fire station eight is underway and should come online twenty twenty three, which provides great support to this community. Parking, always a great issue, so we wanted to give some counts. We are required by code to provide three hundred seventy two parking stalls. We are providing all of those in the garage and on the driveway. And then street parking provides an additional hundred and seventy four. So we feel that we're providing adequate parking or more than enough, knowing we're next to a high school. We have to plan for some on street high school parking kids, I will say though. Ohi has close to thirteen hundred parking spaces where Rocky Mountain had nine hundred. So there's already a built in. Extra parking at Ohi and we've gone above and beyond with a lot of street parking on this project. Okay, my final point here is schools, which is important. All of the schools that this community feeds into currently have capacity. So they're anticipating. Ninety three school aged children would come with this development. And we've got capacity at all levels in the schools that these homes actually would attend. And more importantly, they can walk to the high school and in the future walk to the elementary school. So a good seven. A good nine years of your school career could be walkable. All right, what is Aviator Springs? Aviator Springs is really a partnership. Lots of people made this happen, it's ninety three new homes for the city of Meridian. It's fully integrated with the comprehensive plan and the field sub area plan. And we believe it is the right community at the right time in the right place. Thank you, and I will take any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Matthew, we'll start you out with the big one right off the bat, when these people want to go to Boise Road, are they going to access the freeway on?
They'll go to Ten Mile, no, I'm just kidding, but Mr. Mayor, Councilman. This, they can exit out to Ohi Storm Avenue, which was built with the high school and then they can either go up to McMillan or Eustick. Eustick will put them on highway sixteen. And get them to the freeway. McMillan will take you into Meridian, so how do you get to Boise? You know, we don't know, but people will find that quickest route, they will try different routes till they find the quickest one. For me, map says that it's quickest from my house to take the connector. And I always take Eustick all the way because I don't want to drive on the freeway. So I think, I think we're connected well, our density is appropriate. That we can actually, we don't exceed the roadway capacity that's there for us. And we have good connectivity to the future Eustick interchange, so we're all depending on highway sixteen now.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Holton.
Yeah, and understand that completely. And highway sixteen, we're looking at at five years, you'll probably, if there's approval. You'll be moving forward probably fairly quickly. Those timings don't quite match up. I, it's nicely laid out, it's a good job. Like the single family homes, that's ninety three, you know, if we're talking multifamily, that's way more. But you know, that Eustick widening, McMillan widening, all those roads out there are not improved and they're. Many years down, down the road, so that, that is a challenge and I wasn't on the council's when when Ohi High School and that discussion you guys had, which. You know, you knew it was going to come, once you put Ohi High School out there, things were going to happen and it's happening, which is the way things work, so. I, oh. Wasn't on council then, so I don't know all the, all the issues around that, so anyway. It's just, this is kind of, it is a spin off after the, after the last discussion we had, you know, this is an annexation, so should we be considering these things? Or annexations because the impacts will occur over here and. That shouldn't be happening or we can't, we have it with schools in South Meridian, we have it with roads in in North Meridian more, the school capacities is fine. Yet we have quality developments coming along, you know, and then that's the rub is what, what are we, how do we make this work? It's not that personally, I don't want not make it work, but it's just the timing of things, how do we make things come together at the right time? So we have less traffic problems. Fewer issues with development and conflict with growth. But again, as I, as I said earlier in the other hearing was the fact that. We don't control what other communities do and it's going to impact Meridian because we're in a great place, we're in the middle of everything, we have access to everything. But people come through Meridian to go to that, those, those areas as well, so I don't want to penalize our good folks and developers for doing good projects because. The roads are substandard. Because they're going to come no matter what and we can't, we have no say over that, so I guess kind of open it up for you to to comment and give, give additional thoughts on that. Make your case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, so that is unique, I stood right here during the Ohi High School annexation and was part of that. And since then, we've had, because of the unique location of this, we have Nampa. Which is highly impacts these roads, the construction of the Amazon facility was occurring during Ohi and during Chucka Ridge, which we got approved. And we don't know if Nampa sending cars down Eustick or if all of these people are going to go west to go to work. What our traffic study has told us is that. The roads can handle these trips and they've recommended approval. I think one, the one thing that this applicant can and will do is pay impact fees. Will build all the roadways and has located hopefully in an area where walkability is improved. But really, I guess, being unable to predict who buys each home. It's very difficult for us to predict all those behaviors, those driving behaviors. Yeah, we are acknowledging that you get four cars at every one of these houses, that is the reality of where we live. But we think, you know, with the highway, I was out the other night and it was really foggy and I was driving around the high school. And there's four traffic signals in the middle of nowhere in the fog, it was a very surreal experience. So this area, believe it or not, I think is ahead of where Mountain View and Rocky Mountain were. And maybe we're actually doing better than we think. We're just encountering new challenges as the numbers swell in the valley. But thank you for the question, I don't think I have a specific response or solution for you.
So, so Matt, my, my linear brain, no matter how many times I look at this, I can't get over, you could drive by seven houses to get to a Boys and Girls Club. What I would consider to semi commercial elements with parking lots. Can you walk me through that why my brain says no, having these, driving by. Homes that are fronted on a road, you drive by those to get into what, to me, are commercial style. Facilities and the Boys and Girls Club, I don't, are we talking like a twenty five person daycare Boys and Girls Club, are you talking like a. What, 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 what is the envision, I, I'm looking at the one over here here across the street. That what we're putting inside, that'll put, see this is adjacent to the school, I see that this is inside the subdivision. That's me because that's where the access is coming from, but that's my linear thinking.
Right, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that question, so to be compliant with the mixed use neighborhood. Land use designation, we're required to do a minimum of three different types of uses. So the city's comprehensive plan guides us to this type of solution. Now, the arrangement of the solution within isn't spelled out by the land use plan, however. Our desire to partner with Boys and Girls Club, their desire to partner with us. Has led us to a facility that is associated with the high school. Now, they don't have any firm plans, their board voted that they are interested in pursuing this donation. But they don't know what that would be, and since I don't represent them, I can't speak to the. What exactly they'd have in conversation, they've talked about everything from school aged after school programs to high tech programs for high school aged kids. So what they end up landing on, I don't know. There will be some traffic for parents coming to pick up kids from that facility. We also are hopeful that with the, if the parks master plan for pathways is implemented. We, we are going to have a lot of households rooftops where kids could ride a bike home from this facility or ride to this facility. So we're hopeful that there could be a good plan there. It is definitely associated toward the high school and you do have to pass some homes, but it is away from most of the homes on the property.
Did you look at trying to move that? I'm going to call it north where I'm looking at. Up into that corner where you have the access to the, the road and look at your different accesses and put it, or you didn't have to do that because at least then you have a. I don't know if that's a collector road that's going to be between this and the other one, I, I, looking at one of the pictures or does that not work for some other reasons?
I think, well, the stub street from Chuckers already constructed. So we only have a hundred and ten feet between the high school fence and that road as it comes south. And then to meet ACHD standards, you have to have a certain linear footage before you can have a curve or another intersection. So this widening that you see around the seminary is as far north as that can occur. So if this was going to be shifted north, it would have to go to the east side of that roadway. We did look at several site plans, I think, we did three pre op meetings on this project and spent quite a bit of time. Working through different solutions and different densities with staff. This is what we felt positions all the uses in the best locations. The, the Boys and Girls Club has zero residential neighbors that are directly adjacent to it and that was, that was one of our goals. That was the trade off.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Want to provide a little flavor because I think I kind of started with your initial concerns, but. My youngest spent his summer at the YMCA in Tuscany and. We have lots of families who travel to and through to elementary schools throughout Meridian, I, for me, I kind of saw this as a similar type of use.
I, I try, I went to the same place, except none of those homes front the roadway that comes in, they're, they're all off. From that standpoint, I went into the YMCA over in the other side, the real YMCA that's over there and that residential stuff again. None of the homes back up into the roadway where we're bringing commercial traffic that I could think of. Again, those are the two that I went to, I'm not going to say it doesn't happen in other parts of our community. But when you are putting commercial style things and we are driving past front, what are concerned, I don't even know the name of the roadway network when you have the. Ones that come through the residential that are not meant to be fronted on. As compared to this, which they are. this, which they are. So that's, that's how I came to the, my difference when it was exactly the same situation, same concept, different roadway network design. That's really where it came down to. But I appreciate your. Yep. And again, it's just my linear way of thinking. I say it's wrong. It just is hard for me to get my head around it personally.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Matt, you know, I sat with you on the comprehensive plan committee and we spoke a lot about, you know, open space and a lot of different things. And and from your comments, or was it the open space, one of the committees?
It was the open space code.
That's right, that's right. And so remembering your comments during that, those discussions, it doesn't shock me or that you would sort of design this, this subdivision the way that you have and developer has. It's just different and I think it's pretty cool. I think it's, I think it's thoughtful. And, you know, the the little, you know, creating a bigger buffer so the kiddos can have some really cool place to play. I know in my subdivision down the street, we have a lot of open space, passive open space where the kiddos go find, you know, snakes and the kiddo found a turtle the other day before it got cold and they were, you know, trying to keep it alive. They're like, track, track, we got to turn. So is this type of like open space that you've created, I think is pretty cool. I think the kiddos are are really going to enjoy it, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I have a question for Matt. In pre apps, we were talking about some parking concerns with that access to the high school. I noticed on your parking, can you go back to the parking? Yeah, right there. So the seminary in that general area where the where there's a walkway to the Waihe High School, we have a similar setup at another high school in our city where we've had to find alternative parking options. Are you still considering what we discussed early on in regards to working with ACHD to have that posted for no parking during school hours?
Mr. Mayor, Lieutenant, great question. So yes, when we we met with Scott, we met with Lieutenant regarding this known issue because when parking becomes a problem, people call Meridian PD and they become parking police in a subdivision. And yes, so there was a lot of discussion on can certain areas be signed? And that is something that's on our list. We're a little early right now because we haven't submitted ACHD, but that is on our list to take care of. I appreciate the reminder on that.
Council, any additional questions?
Okay, thank you, Matt. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone to testify testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we have two people signed in. First is Todd Tucker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name's Todd Tucker and I represent Boise Hunter Homes. Our business address is nine twenty three South Brideway Place in Eagle, Idaho. I just wanted to start out by saying we we actually support this project. We're in favor of it. We own the property directly to the south and we think this will be a good asset to that area and ties in very well with what we plan on submitting in the future. We did submit an application on this property a little bit over a year ago. It's since expired, we didn't pursue it any further than that. And we we do anticipate resubmitting an application probably within the next couple of months on this, on this property. We have one really just minor request. Sonya, if you'd bring up my slide. We anticipate when we do submit an application requesting a waiver or a variance with our development to have the internal road that will connect to the north to be moved closer to Highway sixteen than what the code currently allows. You can make it just a little bit smaller so that the whole, or can I do that? Or just slide it to the north all the way, I guess that'd be fine. So we do anticipate requesting a waiver or variance to allow us to move our internal roadway a little bit closer to Highway sixteen. As you can see in this exhibit, maybe if my the the blue, the blue line that kind of zigzags through the property, this is where we're anticipating a road running through the development. And really this necessit, we would be requesting this because as Highway sixteen bifurcates our property, it comes in at an angle and it really starts to pinch our development, make it difficult for us to have enough room to get a quality development in there. And so as much as we could slide that road over, we would like to do that. So in, you know, just briefly, in conclusion, our request is really, and this, this may be the first time ever this has happened, that a developer requests the council grant another developer a waiver. But we would be asking that the council actually allow this developer some flexibility to slide their stub street further to the east with anticipation or with the abilities that if if we are successful in our request to get a waiver, that those roads could align a little bit better. So that's really our request there. They're providing in that area a forty five foot buffer from the the western boundary of Highway sixteen to the eastern boundary of their stub street to the south. And so we would be requesting that they be allowed some flexibility to slide that road further to the east with the thought that if we do, if we are successful, that those roads could align. And that that concludes my my testimony.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Todd, it is kind of a, an interesting request. And so I guess my my first question would be, if you had conversations with the applicant, is that something that they want to pursue but don't feel that they have the ability to? I mean, it is kind of, it's kind of a, it's just, it's just different. So I guess help me understand if the conversations you've had with the applicant and their willingness to want to do this.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh. We, we, we have discussed this a little bit. You know, I think they're complying with the code the way it is. Their property is a little bit different than ours. They have a little bit more room and flexibility. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Matt did say that, hey, if, if, if you guys get approved to move your road closer to Highway sixteen, then we'll, we can accommodate that. He did send me an email a while back saying, hey, we reevaluated this to, to, you know, to meet the standards that we have for the berm and the the wall and the the pathway. We can't, we can't do that by meeting the code. So but he did say, you know, that they were open to to making those arrangements or moving the road over if we get approved. And so that's really our request is just, and again, it's, this is a weird situation where we're a little bit, we almost got a little bit the cart in front of a horse, but we're trying to do good planning and plan for the future. And just thinking along the lines of it, in our mind, it makes a little bit more sense to have the road closer to Highway sixteen to provide that buffer. It gives us a little bit more room for development and we really want these roads to align. So we're just saying, if we're successful, we'd like the ability for these roads to connect, which would then in turn require you allowing this project a little bit of relief from those standards to move their road to the east.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Todd, my first question, would would you still have a wall between Highway sixteen and your road? I mean, is there some sort of barrier buffer? I think that is required, berm and wall or just wall?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hogland. There is quite a bit of distance between the actual pavement of where Highway sixteen will be and the right of way. There's about seven fifty to seventy feet in there. And so we intend on visiting, our intent is to visit with ITD. It's been done in some other places where they've actually allowed us, developers to construct those improvements within that area. So yes, to comply with the code, we'll have to provide the berm and the wall and we think that's important. Again, this is a lot of requests that we would be making of other agencies. But again, we're really just looking for some flexibility. If we are successful in those endeavors, to have the ability for those roads to connect, we may, we may not be successful, but we just want the flexibility. We think it's good planning for in the future to have that flexibility that if we are successful, that it it all aligns and works out well for everybody.
Mr. Mayor, follow up?
Councilman Hogland.
Todd, I'll ask you this question, but it's one that Matt might weigh in on as well because it's it's their development where you come in, coming into the site, coming through the other subdivision, go in front of the seven homes the mayor was talking about. And then, and then you have the donated land for Boys and Girls Club, seminary. And then if you're to come down that street, take the little jog right and then straight, you've got what, four or five homes there? Why not come off of that street? We're showing green space and then reclaim that green space where their road is and come in from the upper section or the west section closer to the high school into the, into your site? Would that solve problems? But there might be other problems I'm not aware of. But just kind of looking at that map, now you're not going through how many more homes to get to the homes that you you want to build, so.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hogland, I'm pretty confident I understood what you said. One of the struggles that we'll run into is there is a, there is a canal that runs through there. So it would be requiring a bridge or another developer to build a bridge over that canal, which may be a little bit more onerous than than they're willing to take on. But but we did look at that and think about that. One of the concepts that we're kicking around and thinking about for this area is a multifamily development. And so it would be a basically a public street stubbing into the parking lot of a of a of a multifamily development. And so just the way that we have it arranged, we think works the best way. Again, you've got a canal there that would require a bridge to come over, so.
Council, any additional questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Ron Hopper.
Good evening, thank you. Councilman and lady, my, I have, my address is thirty five ten North McDermott Road. And I agree with Councilman Brad here, the traffic is horrendous, okay? If this subdivision goes in, the traffic for the kid, my grandson goes to Waihe High School, I drop him off, it's a nightmare. Some kid's going to get hurt. I mean, it really has to be looked at about all the egress points and everything on the subdivision, okay? I mean, I just want to voice my, my neighbors on McDermott feel the same way. If I can bring fifteen people in here with me and we can make a show, but I'm just saying that this subdivision, I mean, you know yourself, all these subdivisions, I mean, I first came to Idaho, you guys may be born here, but I first came here in nineteen seventy one, fifty years ago in Custer County. I've only been down here a few years. But all these subdivisions, you got to realize a lot of things. Eustick Road is torn up, okay? Cherry is torn up. The cutting and patching, I was in construction for forty five years. I built everything but a dam. It's torn up, their patches are failing, they're six months old. That's the same thing going to be on McDermott. Cherry, Euston, all those roads, either you didn't make these developers set up a contingency fund to come back and fix their screw ups. That's what you need to do. And then something else you've got to realize, all these houses, look it up, how much water? Last year, we were told to conserve your water. I'm on a well and septic, okay? But how much water does each one of these homes take? Okay, a month, three hundred gallons? You can Google it. That's my opinion and I have neighbors that agree with me and I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, Council.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, that traffic, you made a good point. The traffic in this whole area is ridiculous, you know that.
I I didn't get your first, your name, what was your?
Ron Hopper, just I get the Hopper. When you see it on TV, get the Hopper.
Hopper, okay. Thank you, sir. I I just wanted a question, you're on, you're on McDermott.
Right, thirty five ten.
Okay, I I'm just trying to figure out, we now have that nor, that Storm Drive, I think it's called, or Storm Road. And they've got the lights there and there's a lot of traffic going up and down that for the school and whatnot. Are you seeing more traffic on McDermott just from the school or is it just because of general development?
There's lots of traffic on McDermott because you got your other subdivisions to the north. Say, like you say, the high school wasn't even there when we, my wife bought the house, you know, but it's progress, it's fine. It's just got to be planned. And like the mayor said, you don't have a commercial building right in front of your big subdivision, you know? So I mean, I I agree with them one hundred percent on that, so.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, gentlemen, have a good one.
Thank you.
All right, that's everyone who's signed up in advance to testify. Ralph, any any comments you'd like to make to this evening? Okay, nothing on the record appears.
Oh, that was funny.
And online, we just have ACHD and our Parks Director. If either one of you are looking to testify on the side, you can go ahead and use raise your hand feature. Otherwise, Matt, we invite you up to make any closing comments.
Thank you. Sonya, would you mind putting my presentation back up? So while we're waiting for that for come up, to come up, Mr. Hopper makes a good point and we did, he also attended our neighborhood meeting, which we was, I believe, a hundred and nine degrees that day and we did it outside. And to be convenient, of course, but, oh, it was hot. And he was one of the brave souls that actually attended and we appreciate that. At that time, we felt that we were successful because we don't have any residential, we don't have any high density on the east side of Highway sixteen. So the uses that are occurring as part of this project on McDermott are going to be the least amount of traffic possible. And I will also say that ITD and their planning has a plan to reroute McDermott. I don't live there. I don't know if that's viewed as a positive or a negative for the people that live there, but it is going to peel off, go around to the east and connect to Eustick at a new location. So that's my comments on that. Regarding, and this is an image of what's, what we have planned to occur on McDermott. This is the Aclyma Plan. They are our current Meridian business research and development and manufacturer of moisture sensors. They want to reinvest all the money from the sale of this land into a new facility here where they would move their operation. So there's very, very little traffic sent going out to McDermott from our project. This is an image to show you how our south substrate, stub street works to the Hunter Homes parcel. Todd characterized everything accurately. We're not against his request. What we looked at is providing the required berm and wall landscape buffer to street and based on the slopes of the berm and the height of the wall and ITD's roadway center line, this is what we think works. We also think this is the most attractive entrance. You know, every developer thinks of where their edge is, that's how you enter the community and the wall being next to the road. That's not something we contemplated and we have not coordinated with ITD to do any of our work on their parcel. So our preference at this time would be to go with this design as shown. But I guess as we work through construction documents, i- if we can do some minor shifting, we will do our best to accommodate that. But tonight, I don't want to commit to sliding it over right to the property boundary. My last comment would just be to be to thank staff because they worked with us for about a year on this. And if you count Chucker and Waihe, five years. So, you know, we like these kind of projects that keep, keep going and keep us engaged with the the planning staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, additional questions or comments from Matt?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Adam, I'm I'm curious about Mr. Tucker's request with the road and all that. Is that something that you guys are seeking? Is it something that you're interested in? Is, I mean, your layout doesn't contemplate that and you're not coming to with any type of a request. So my assumption is the layout that you've put together is what you plan to run with. But I don't like, you know, placing applicants against each other, but it, because it's such a unique request, I wanted to at least give you a chance to respond.
Right, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. We feel that our proposed design is the way we want to go. So it provides the biggest buffer, the best berm and wall to provide the same type of sound and site attenuation to the homes that are just on the other side of this road. However, we, so we want to However, we so we want to proceed with this. We want to be a good neighbor because there's going to be a time where we need Hunter Homes to maybe accommodate something from us. So if we want to find a middle ground, we don't want to go all the way over. But we think there might be a little bit of wiggle wiggle room at this time as of tonight, we are not asking for a variance. We are coming in with a code compliant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
Sonya, Chris, whoever's controlling, can we go or maybe you, Matt, can we go to one that showed the green space and and kind of from above?
Well, I love this picture, but hopefully that's what we get.
That's what the berm is going to look like when you're done, I'm sure.
How about this?
Yeah, that one works, that one works. You know, we we've got that drain or irrigation canal down here in the lower left and and you've cut off a corner of that lot, right? Yeah, keep going down, down and right there, yeah. And so we've got that angle because I asked about the street up there, why not come down and come straight? And well, we've got a bridge. Well, that that irrigation easement is going to be going to the to the southeast, continue on. So I'm thinking, okay, there's there's going to be issues there, but that's for another application. But then going back to yours, you've got that angle there to allow for that easement. Looking at that street to give more room, can you angle the lot there a same same block? But to the east and angle that so you've got room for your street to come in? And not be so tight against the berm and and give them some wiggle room. Just a thought, when I saw that, I thought, well, you could do the same on on the other side to bring that a little bit in. And we move away from that. But again, and who knows what the future holds for for the next application to the south? But you know, if you're looking at trying to work that out, that's just a thought.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilman. So I am not a civil engineer and my engineer would be cringing right now. Because if we start to slide that road or curve or move that road, the ripple effect of that is pretty dramatic. And the required radius on a curve and the amount of straight distance you need before you have a T-intersection. The as we start to look at that and maneuver that, yes, it could be done. We could look at a road on that further on that west side. I'm not sure that really would work well for what Hunter Homes is. There could be a little bit of maneuvering that we could do. And still retain our aesthetics of our berm and the sound quality of it, I think.
Mr. Mayor, follow up on a little different subject, the access point for your subdivision. I I would anticipate they'd be coming off a storm way dry road. Is that how you see, where where do you see the majority of your residents in this development? Coming into that 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 property?
So, Mr. Mayor, councilman, so yes, so our property is not allowed to take access from McDermott. Because it's we can't even build a temporary because it will go away. So that would be a false promise to people living there. So everyone who comes into this subdivision at the current time would exit Eustick or McMillan onto a Y storm. Those are both signalized at this point. And then partially improved on the roadways, not fully improved. They would travel to achievement and then head east into this project. There were the kind of the bright blue or the cyan arrow that points north-south on the west side of Tucker. That is a future road alignment that will connect into Gander Creek. The Tucker Ridge developer is constructing that crossing right now for emergency access vehicles from the fire station. And that will become a roadway when the elementary school develops. And so there would there would be another access through this area. But you still initiate, you still get on to Hawaii Storm from either McMillan or Eustick. So and Hawaii Storm is built, it's a half section because we didn't finish the other side. But it has a middle turn lane, it's it's appears to be completely constructed, even the west, the west side's a shoulder embargoed.
Thank you.
So, Councilman Borden.
Mr. Mayor, Matt, could you put up the? School capacity slide that you showed? That one right there. So one of the things that's been highlighted more recently in some of these applications and it and it gets focused in the annexation discussions, as you saw earlier now, is school capacity. So the 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 column just to the right of the highlight is the elephant in the room. On any of these applications, so the the difficult question for any applicant and and you with this one is where do these kids go to school in light of all of the other approved platted parcels? If a school bond does not pass?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden, good question. So yeah, the area I highlighted shows current enrollment and capacity. And then the next column is approved preliminary plat parcels per attendance area. So for example, Pleasantview Elementary, there's three thousand and eighty nine parcels approved within that attendance area. This graphic does not tell us how many school age children would be predicted to come from those parcels. We know just by looking at a map that more kids are going to start to, they're going to take that five forty six to six fifty.
Sure.
And that will that will happen. Our project, where it is in line with those three thousand and eighty nine, I do not know. And it's the I'm I'm having like flashbacks to the ten mile question, which project? Is it the person that lives next door to the school that is considered the overcrowded issue? Or is it the person from the North Oaks project that over crowds? It's a really difficult question to answer. This is the data we have today.
Sure.
We know we can walk these kids into Hawaii, which feels good. And there's capacity there. And we know that there's a future elementary school site. I think our biggest burden on this particular area will become middle school as time goes by. But that's just my assumption as a resident of the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Just just some follow up comments to that, Matt, and it's not not necessarily a fair question to ask you, quite frankly. I didn't, and I don't think you have an answer because you can't answer it. It highlights one of the concerns that it's just come up more recently. And and some of the service level issues that we try to address on an annexation. You know, roads and schools are big ones. And with regards to roads, for better or for worse, there's at least impact fees that assist. And there's some some recurring revenue that assists ACHD. And albeit it it might be slow, but to provide that infrastructure. But schools and school capacity is a unique wrinkle. And it was highlighted of, you know, weeks back in an earlier application. So the challenge that I have with this, and I guess any annexation going forward. And the challenge, I think, for the council is what do we do with that elephant in the room? That unlike other capacity issues, whether it's sewer capacity or road capacity, the school capacity is extremely unique. Because it requires, you know, passage of a bond which our community has changed. And at some point, you know, each project by themselves is small incremental expansion of that. But you when we look at the approved preliminary plats on the center column, at what point do we are we concerned enough as the council members? To say, where do they go to school? And and who gets in first if a bond doesn't pass? So one of the questions I'll leave you with, it's a difficult one, quite frankly, I think we have to wrestle with. I'm coming to terms with the difficult decision, which I think needs to be made. But I'm curious your thoughts on a condition in the development agreement that says the first building permit can be issued upon passage of the next school bond. I'm just curious your initial thoughts on a concept like that, which ties the ability to construct any of this to the passage of a school bond that provides the capacity that we all admit is required.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden, thanks. Wow, I we were getting late in the day, I didn't know we'd have this question come up. I read the newspaper article from the couple of weeks ago regarding that crisis situation with the schools south of the freeway in the Hillsdale area and the comments from council about it being kind of a game changing moment and a new focus on school capacity. Actually, that's why I put this slide in here, I wanted to address it head on and show that the snapshot view and the information we have available today shows that we have capacity. To answer your question, connecting development to passage of school bonds, I think, would be short sighted. I school bonds are elections run in the full school district boundary and have very little to do with local conditions. And West data is barely passing school bonds today, even under crisis situations. And I think combining those two different agencies could create many, many unintended consequences. And I would not be supportive, I would be supportive of impact fees that go to schools. But I think tying it to bond passage takes the control away from the city. The city could get a project they really want that you can't approve because you can't get a school bond passed because North Eagle votes no on every bond. That could become problematic.
If I could just follow that comment up.
Councilman Borden.
You may be spot on, Matt, I I don't disagree. And quite frankly, that's what gives me even more concern. I think you're right about the community's appetite for passing school bonds. And the fact that there's a legitimate risk that they might not pass, I think that it highlights the concern. And and highlights the fact that you're just adding, any applicant is adding approved plats and parcels fighting for a finite number of seats in our schools. And I just wrestle with i- if it's death by a thousand cuts by approving each single application without addressing that. Now, the 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 building permit for school bonding is a way to, it's a it's a concept, it's out of the box. But to try and approve good projects, I think your project's really attractive and well designed. But like if we didn't have sewer capacity, a well-designed project, it gets stuck, we can't service.
Councilman Borden, you look like you froze. And it was on the word stuck.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Holton, to get Councilman Borden back on, I do have a question, Matthew. And you you show ninety three school age children predicted from this development by West data school district. You've got ninety three homes that you're going to have, I I thought they're using a point seven ratio now. But is Sonya, I don't know if that's something staff tracks or it was, I thought West data was doing point seven for per the unit as opposed to a one-to-one match, but I but I could be wrong for that. And also, while Sonya is looking around for that, I know Coal Valley's out there somewhere. Christian High School that's located downtown is going to build. And Jim Prep is out there somewhere, aren't they? I I'm not sure where exactly, but yes.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilman, so good question. So I do not know how those numbers were calculated. I think Marcy Horner provides those from the school district. I'd hate to guess, it could be proximity to the school, you get a higher ratio, I don't know. Coal Valley, which I would advocate for approval of that project, which is coming to you soon, is approximately one mile due north of this project. And school choice is one small tool in alleviating some of West data's capacity issues. And then Jim Prep, I believe, is on Black Cat. It's it's within a mile or so and it's to the north of this project. And then we also have Compass Charter that's near their their newer facility as well.
So, Mr. Borden, we we lost you right at the point where you said stuck.
My uh, my battery died, it's a long day, I'm using up every device I got. I'm sorry about that.
Did you have any anything further, any questions or?
Yeah, I'll just conclude, yeah, yeah, I'll conclude the thought and and the the challenge. It was trying to see if if there's a tool such as that for the city to allow good projects to come forward as intended. But constrain the timing that they come on board to the ability to provide one of the critical essential services, and that's school capacity. And and the fact that bonds are difficult to pass, it just highlights this concern. If the council needs to pick a date that they're going to apply, I just don't know how we don't address it. At some point, we have to start. And I don't know if frankly, I can wait anymore. And I thought that might be a way to address that concern and still allow good applications to go forward. So that's the that's the big hurdle I see with this. And and quite frankly, anything other, anything else going forward of any particular scale in an annexation. I just don't know how we ignore it anymore.
And we won't ask you to re- I don't think that was the in comment without a question at this point in time. Mr. Borden, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's what I heard unless you want to reply.
Uh, no, the condition, that was it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I I would just say that everything Councilman Borden's saying, I understand. I and I know these pressures, we I do school development in Oregon, Washington and Nevada. And in Washington and Nevada, Washington, the state matches dollar for dollar. That's their solution, the state believes in and funds the construction of schools. In Nevada, they have funding sources that we don't have through casinos and mineral extraction. And they provide money for capital construction of schools. In Idaho, we don't have that, in Idaho, you can't build a school until there's so many kids in it that you're at a crisis situation and the voters vote yes. So then the high school builds millions of dollars of infrastructure to try to get open. And then more development comes. I don't know that if the the state legislature hasn't solved it, West data Boise Valley View hasn't solved it, Madison County hasn't solved it. I don't know how we solve it tonight. I feel that if that were a condition tonight, that would that would be overlooking the current data we have, the current rules we're trying to operate on.
If only we had a one point five billion surplus that we were just trying to figure out what to do with it. Billion? Yeah, I'm talking about the states, one point five billion. But it is almost the definition of insanity, to your point. You have overcrowding, you go build schools in places where you don't have people. So you go put homes around those places where the schools are and the schools fill up with people. So you got to go build more schools other places. Seems like a self-perpetuating problem. I I have a question, it's just more of a philosophical question, it's going to be easy compared to this, the last one you did. But you mentioned earlier that, you know, you under the expectations of land use, you had to put different types into the project, i.e. seminary, Boys and Girls Club. into the project, i.e. seminary, boys and girls club. But you do have stuff on the, over on the McDermott side. But for the requirement, would you be putting the boys and girls club facility in this location inside this project? I'm not gonna put the seminary on your back because that was, you know, we understood that they, they want to go by the school. Just curious, would this have been your first, would this have been your or your project have the people's first choice? More residential? Or this, or that type of facility? Just so we can, I think it's important for us from a land use perspective, be thinking about all these type of things when we're seeing these type of results of our, of our, you know, policies.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. So I think if this was just medium density residential land use, we would have met that. And we, we would have likely pursued a seminary application as part of it or a parcel for that application. And, but it's less likely that we would have pursued some sort of a community partnering effort and a boys and girls club type project. However, with the mixed use neighborhood, land use, and then the, the position of Highway 16, which does not allow you any direct access from that western portion to Highway 16. And the sellers desire to retain that six acres for their project, their investment in the community. That is what led us to needing to provide multiple uses on the, on the west side. So when we looked at it with the developer, we were stuck with who would buy a parcel in the middle of a neighborhood behind high school? And we were left with probably no one, and it would probably sit empty wherever. That is not a good commercial space and we couldn't think of anything. So this developer, who is also very community minded, said, well, let's come up with a better solution. Let's, there are organizations in our community that need space, that can afford space, that are seeking to provide services. Boys and Girls Club came up in those discussions because they don't have anything in the west end of the city. And that's a, that's a, for them, it's a very underserved part of the community. And with the number of households going up rooftops, they got very excited about the opportunity. So I guess to answer your question, that when we look at the land use map, we want to comply with the code. So we, we were aiming to provide multiple types of uses. Because of the high school and the highway position, true commercial didn't feel like it fit well. And so our creative approach was to try to reach out to some sort of community partner that doesn't have a chance. You know, they, they'll save enough money just alone on the purchase of a one acre parcel to really kickstart a major project. So it was just circumstances, a combination of circumstances that I think led us to that.
That's good. I appreciate it. It just, it just seemed to be out of, out of place, you know, throughout this project. And sometimes when you have codes and policies that dictate that, you may get a, may get a, a great thing out of it. But on the front end, it looks kind of like a why did I do that type for me? And this, I, I've heard this from a few different parties recently about the, the requirements that were being placed upon individual parcels that contain all those elements as compared to looking at the area specific around it. But, and that's a different conversation. We don't have to, I want to get this through this evening. We have people here, but I appreciate you, the indulgence.
And Mr. Mayor, if you look at the sub area plan, field sub area plan, that is what you're talking about. We're on the edge. And if you look at that four square miles, you can see where these uses should go. These mixed use types uses. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, additional questions? And do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Just want to make sure we get this done before we do lose Borden's phone.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Well, I'll at least get the first half moving. I'm moving to close the public hearing on H 2021 0065.
I can the motion.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Guys have it. The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I, I won't belabor the comments. I think Matt did a, a good job trying to answer a very difficult question that is as, that is posed to us as much as it is to him. So I couldn't find an answer either in prep for this. And in prep for knowing at what stage you make the very difficult decision. If an applicant was willing to a DA provision that allowed a project to proceed with that. That was the only other avenue I could see something going forward. And, and I don't know if there's a clear line and when you start and make that difficult decision, but I think you have to begin somewhere. And I think we're there. So I'm not supportive of this application at this time for those reasons.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
These are, these are becoming harder and harder. I've always been a proponent for growth, growing up in Meridian. I was here in 1971 when my family moved here. And so I've seen so many changes. And, and growth has been great. We couldn't wait till we got McDonald's, even though we had the Hungry Onion and a few others. It was a long time ago. And I like growth and there are challenges with growth. And when I served previously on council, we were going through a terrible recession. And I'd much rather have the challenges of growth than a recession, which is so difficult on people. But we are to the point where we talk about transportation, you know, good locks that are becoming more and more severe. We talk about school overcrowding. And we've asked for information now to look at what are the applications that have been approved that have impacts? And then Matt, you're, you're absolutely right. Having grown up here and have seen it time and time again, until there is enormous amount of pressure and kids are spilling into the hallways. People are not going to vote to raise taxes to build a new school. It's, it's gotta be that, that hard. And, and so that makes it even more difficult. So then do we say, okay, we'll just slow growth down, really pump the brakes? And what will happen? Well, it won't be impact fees for roads. Of course, schools don't get impact fees. But voters aren't going to be asked to raise taxes. And then here, here we sit and there are jobs to be had to growth. And I'm, I'm a believer, if you aren't growing at least to some degree, you, you could be getting stale and possibly even going backwards. Just depends on the philosophy of how you, how you look at growth. And as we talked about in the, in the previous application, the place really to deal with this is at the annexation level. I mean, this is where we have to make the tough decision. Is it going to be something we're moving forward with? And this is an annexation zoning and preliminary plat. Now we're putting in place into motion certain things that, that will move forward. And this is, this is not a bad application. It's well thought up. I keep thinking is, is a single family home, the 93 homes only on, on 40 acres saving grace because my family. But it's just hard to go there because I want to be consistent on how I, how I do things and how I vote. And, and when we talk about traffic impacts and those types of things, and, and my comments from the previous hearing about here we are at a major intersection of 10 mile and the interstate. And we're not going to possibly have growth occur there because of everything we're doing out here and flowing up when, well, that has the least amount of impact. You know, a city wants to grow from the center and go out. And same with transportation areas, you know, from there you want to, want to grow out. So it's for me, it's, it's hard because it's about being consistent. And, and being that we're at the annexation phase of this, I don't think I, I can go there tonight. It just is despite a well thought out, uh, planned development that is has, has some other amenities to it that folks want, and that, that makes it a very difficult vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I know a few weeks ago, we were dealing with that application in, in South Meridian. And I think someone even referenced, we called that was kind of a game changer moment for us. Maybe that was Council President Burn. One of the things that I, I applaud and I appreciate Councilmember Borden throwing out an idea, a creative idea. Not quite sure I'd be sold on it, but I appreciate, I think it's that first step and that thoughtful but collaborative and decisive action that we as a body need to decide that we're gonna take. I like this application. And there is, I think, some differences between a project that's multifamily in a area of town where the schools are already taxed versus one that is under capacity, but we know will soon one day be full. And I, Councilmember Holton, I appreciate your desire and your willingness to be consistent throughout. I think that's something that we're all achieving. So while I'm not opposed to this project, I'm not supportive of it tonight. And maybe this is a, an instance where a continuance may make sense with some understanding that I think that we as a, as a body need to maybe look at a workshop where we invite our community in, our, our citizens, our community stakeholders, the development community, and ask them for some ideas. Council President Burn, earlier tonight, you, you made a very appropriate comment. We, we shouldn't be designing from the dais. And I think it's hard for us when an applicant comes up, we start to talk about these issues as it relates to a specific application. We need to be looking at it as a whole. So that would be my suggestion is that we continue this out for a few weeks and have an opportunity to hear from people with other suggestions, other resources that we could look to explore. And I think we should be inviting our legislative delegation to come to this meeting as well and share their suggestions because the fact of the matter is that anything that's going to support our community long term is going to require some decisive and collaborative action at the state level.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burn.
I, I don't know if there's a whole lot that I can add to this discussion. I think that there's been some thoughtful comments made already. Matt, I, I stand by my comments from earlier. I think this is a great application. I, I, I spoke about it during our time together on that committee bidding open space and, and you had some creative ideas and some different ideas in that, in that, uh, that committee during those meetings. And I, I, I still believe I, I believe that you applied exactly what you said in those committee meetings to this, to this application. At the end of the day, I think, I think we're at a crossroads. And if we weren't, and if it wasn't clear two or three weeks ago, I think I think it's pretty clear now that, that, you know, we just need some high level discussions. And we need them pretty quick. I know the government doesn't usually operate in the, in the quickest form, but I think that we need to find what that looks like. And we probably need to get on it as soon as possible. I have a lot of friends in the development community. I have a lot of, I, I own a flooring business. And so I'm directly connected to the, the growth that happens in this, in this area. I think we're all pro-growth. I don't think there's a person that's sitting on this dais that, that hasn't, I mean, we've had decades of past council members and councils who have been pro-growth and pro-business. And so I don't think that that changes anything. I, I just think at the end of the day, we just need to have some serious discussions as it relates to you know, schools and transportation. So consistency is key. And we just see, we need to get there. We owe it to our development community. We owe, we owe it to those who are spending money and taking risk in our community. And so we just need to get there sooner than, sooner than later to, to be able to afford some direction to our friends in the, in the development community.
So I'm going to be a little bit different than the rest of you this evening. I actually, you heard my comments. I wasn't excited about the design of this project. But I don't think this is the one that we make a decision on saying no on development at this time. Set a priority growth area for us. We're putting a fire station right next to it. We're putting a police station right next to it. We're building and the state is going to build an interstate that's going to be put in place in this location before these homes are likely onboard. And that standpoint, there is not just a brand new high school. There's going to be a brand new private high school, a brand new private elementary school. There are charter schools out in this area. There are a lot of investment that's occurring in this specific location at this specific time, which is what we've asked our development community to be focused on. Now, does that mean that we don't even have a conversation about the larger issues about? You know, do you, if, if there's, quite frankly, the, I think the question for council is, yeah, are you looking for a moratorium at this point in time on development? To answer this question, because I think that that's really where you're getting to. If you're wanting to say, let's take a pause and have a conversation, there is an actual way that you can do that, if that's the way council wants to proceed on these projects. Just throwing it out there. That's, that may be the cleanest way to do it, rather than to continue to hear applications and have them move forward through the process. If you're feeling like you're not comfortable to make decisions and you want to put a pause and bring in the community and have that conversation. So just food for thought for whatever decision you all make. But to me, this is not the, the development where that decision needs to be made at this time based upon the investment that's occurring amongst everybody in this location in our community. Not to say we don't need to have a bigger conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burn.
I appreciate your comments. I, I, I think that, you know, suggesting, you know, that this mayor may not be a moratorium, maybe a hair premature. I, all the respect, I think that that's the reason why we have these conversations and we have the discussion. You know, I, I certainly would want to suggest that without, you know, many discussions and, 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 you know, getting our development partners in the room and, and our citizens who, who and the citizens who are, you know, that have concern and who have interest in this, in this dialogue as well. So I, I think it's important for us to be clear in the sense that, you know, this isn't, we're not, we're not suggesting any type of moratorium or pause or anything in that regard. We're just, you know, it's, it's time to have high level discussions. And I'll, and I'll punt to Joe. You know, he, he started this discussion off earlier, but maybe he has some comments to, to, to to add to the discussion as well.
And if I could, just real quick, I'm gonna ask our legal department this very question because to me, this is what a moratorium, the, what moratoriums are designed for is to allow the cities an opportune time to come up with a plan when there's certain parts of your 13 points which are not able to be fulfilled in your opinion. That's, you know, I could be wrong, but that's the way I've, what I've been told. But if you can at least respond that, then we'll have it go to Mr. Borden afterwards.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess, one concern I have, and I'm just glad to get the moratorium statute we can raise that. One is short.
Correct. Right. It's a limited duration time period.
Very short. It's to pass an ordinance for your city. We're talking about solving a problem that we have no control over at all. And so I don't know any ordinance that we could pass that could meet the concerns that you're talking about. That would be my one concern to try to defend that is that I don't, I don't think they fit together.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
He's the one who suggested the, the continuance. It's not for the sake of a moratorium. It is for the sake to flush out some other suggestions or ideas aside from just a annexation or a building permit won't be issued until a school bond passes. That, that could be one of many suggestions that may come not at 10 o'clock at night after, after a long city council meeting. I, I think this is an opportunity for us to invite the public. If citizens have suggestions, if stakeholders have suggestions to offer those to us as we can consider these with this application that's before us and other applications that are in the future. And it may result in a moratorium, but I,
And it may result in a moratorium, but I agree with Council President, that's a little premature for us to be saying that's what we're gonna be doing.
And I understand that, it, I'm just getting to the point, if it sounds like it, because we want to hold off on things until we address issues. But Councilman Borden, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just to kind of close the loop, I don't have any concern on the continuance. I only have concern, I love being consistent, but until some community partner can provide the data that shows this problem isn't the problem with the magnitude it appears to be. It's just to your comment about, you know, it's sort of insane to do the same thing and expect the different results. I don't know when we start, and if it's kind of shocking and dramatic, then so be it. I'm fine with continuing this, but this is the elephant in the room, and you have to start at some point. And if it upsets people, so be it. We have to have the conversation. It's not popular, but I think that's part of our commitment and our obligation to the community. And not everybody will like it, but I'm ready to have it. I'm ready to have it today. A continuance for the fairness to the applicant. I, no problem with at all, if this goes, quite frankly, into January, but that's the data we need. And I don't know how to, how else to solve this problem.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I move that we continue file number 2021.
Need to reopen the public hearing if we're gonna continue it. Don't we?
I have to.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I, I move we open the public hearing on number four, Aviator Springs, file number H-2021-0065.
Second the motion. I have a motion on the second to reopen the public hearing. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Guys have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
If we continue item four, Aviator Springs-H-2021-0065 to January 25th.
Second the motion. I have a motion, second to continue these items to January 25th. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Guys have it, and the items are continued. Next item up is feature meeting topics.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
This is sort of what I was hinting at in comments earlier. It wasn't an annexation, but this is certainly the elephant in the room that I think we have a commitment to try and address and accept the realities of what the data is telling us. So whether it's at a workshop or 6:00 PM, to answer the question throughout our city, when we have a magnitude of approved plats that far exceeds any capacity of any school, coupled with the new political landscape in our community that everyone apparently concedes is not supportive of any debt and school bonds. And it's unfortunate, but that combination is toxic. And we have very difficult decisions to make as stewards of the community. So somehow there's gonna be, I think, I request, maybe it's in January, that workshop discussion to try and create solutions that and any of the community partners can help us try and solve. That's the request. Thank you.
Anything else? Then do I have a motion? Mr. Mayor, Councilman Print. I have a motion adjourned. On favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Guys have it. We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.